She's back there?
She's sorry.
We're gonna start. We're gonna get started. It's just three board members tonight. We have some absentees. Most of the agenda will be able to move forward with just the three of us. There may be an item here or there that we can't, but we'll do the best to get through. So, opening up at 7:40 for the planning board on August 12th. And we're just reminding everybody that we audio and videotape for folks at home, so when you do speak, you'll need to use a microphone and identify yourself. So with that, our first agenda item is looking at MacArthur Ave. And this is a continuation.
Paul Cutler with Mayor Mike Edgery.
Little green light.
Okay. This is a set of plans for the planning board that I brought up tonight and it's on the wall.
Can you check the thing again, please?
There's a green light on?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this is a continuation of this planning board hearing for MacArthur Ave. Again, this is basically the front page. It shows the locus of the lot. This is the existing cart path that runs up MacArthur Ave all the way up to Hunter Ave. This is the plan that we're presenting tonight, and it's roughly 232 feet long of roadway. And that ensures that we have 150 feet of frontage from the beginning of the lot that we're trying to gain access to. So it's 150 feet here from here up to the end. So that's the minimum frontage on that particular area. Again, this is a very steep slope coming all the way up from Lake Shore Drive up through here, up through to about this point, and then it starts to flatten out a little bit. But this is normally about existing, rather. It's about a 12 and 1/2 percent slope. And what we're presenting tonight is an 11 percent slope coming up from Lake Shore Drive. So we've got a 3 percent slope coming off of Lake Shore Drive with a vertical curve, and then it runs 11 percent. The roadway that I have now is also 18 feet wide. I've shown it before, 16 feet, 20 feet, and now it's gone back to 18 feet.
Because? Why did you change it to 18 feet as opposed to 12?
Just because it gives me a little more area to have the side slopes. In other words, it's coming off the road, and then it slopes back to existing grades. As you can, you probably can't see it here, but there is a proposed retaining wall I've got running down this side of MacArthur Ave, just so that this will tie into existing grades. And then this side, it slopes basically onto this lot until approximately in here. And then I've got another proposed retaining wall right in here to tie in the grades. I've also shown this roadway is not having a crown. I've had it sloped all the way across the road from this side of the roadway to the southerly side of the roadway over here. And it's, I have a 6 percent pitch, or 6-inch pitch, rather, from one side to the other. So everything is sloping in this direction. And then I also have two catch basins located roughly halfway up the roadway here, and another two down on this side of the roadway just before we get to Lake Shore Drive.
What do they discharge into?
They discharge into a Coltech system, a Coltech system, which is these type of drainage structures. And they're, these are Coltech rechargers. They're 330 XL HD, which is the heavy-duty Coltech system. And I've got a system here for each catch basin. Tom hasn't had a chance to look at this yet, but I have the drainage report that I've done for the subdivision. And I can go over that roughly if you want. This is the area that we're working with. And this area here, right in this area, that's all that's tributary to Lake Shore Drive currently. There's another area here that's tributary to 77 Priscilla Ave, this area. And there's a couple of small areas here that are tributary to 66 Lake Shore Drive. With the drainage system that we're proposing with the catch basins, all of this area now is tributary to the catch basins. The amount that's tributary to Lake Shore Drive is very small. And the area that's tributary towards 77 Priscilla Ave is now smaller than what's flowing there now. I'm not, but that's what we're proposing tonight. Again, it's a 40-foot right-of-way that we're playing with. We have an 18-foot roadway, so there's 11 feet on either side of the road to grade it.
And when we last left this, I think you were saying that you were proposing a private road. Is that right?
Yeah. What we'd like to do is just have an access to this lot.
Originally, it was discussion as to whether the town would take over the road and maintain it. And I think we've passed that now, or is that right? That your understanding?
Well, as far as I know, the road is, I mean, this roadway would be maintained by the town.
Michelle?
Yeah. I do have in my notes that it was considered public by the town, because we had no precedent for private road.
Yeah, I know. Over and above that, for the past six months, or however long this thing has been here, I think the board has been requesting that the applicant obtain a title opinion to identify what they can or can't do within this roadway. It is clear that the applicant does not own the right-of-way, which is the conventional practice when a person brings a subdivision, own the land in fee simple. That is clearly not the case here. This is a public, semi-public, private, we don't know what it is. That question was raised six months ago. The applicant was requested to get a title opinion. We don't have it. I think all the engineering is premature until we find out whether the applicant has any right at all to even alter this right-of-way.
I thought Gino would address that.
Gino gave us, the last time we saw some opinion from him was back in May. And it was really the question that the subject lot has the right of access, but the right of access is not the same as the right to a building permit. And so it's not entitled to a building permit until the road is either fully constructed or constructed where it's safe and can be serviceable. So it kind of becomes this circular thing, and I think at one point we had talked about...
I don't think that's really a title opinion.
Right.
The issue is, who owns the land and who has a right to alter it? And what is the extent of the alteration permitted? It's not completely analogous, but I am familiar with a case that I was involved in where the planning board I was on required modifications to a private way. The court overruled the planning board's decision, saying that abudders to a private way have the right to make minimal improvements to make it possible, but not do extensive alterations as are being done here. Over and above that, I don't think we're fully clear whether this is public, private, or what it is. I think the legal opinion should come before the engineering, and I think everything's backwards here. We need a title opinion, a legal and title opinion, as to what the applicant can or can't do within the right-of-way.
That's right.
Or whatever it is, the strip of land.
Yeah. Gino's opinion was based on, what he's saying was an unsigned opinion from an unidentified person stating that the lot in question had a right of access. So that's not necessarily legal documentation.
No, and the right of access is not the same thing as the right to extensively alter, which is what's being proposed here.
You know, just to comment, I mean, I do recall the conversations here, because we had some confusion among the members of the board because Gino wasn't present, but at a point later in the process, he did make comment. So we do have the benefit of that. And I think, you know, what Mr. Houston says sounds reasonable, and it sounds consistent with, I think, what we have been asking. So I would have to agree with his comments in terms of what we would be looking for, at least what I would be looking for as a board member. I mean, I think you're working hard to engineer what you can engineer, and I think that's appreciated. I mean, you're really trying to manage the surface water and runoff and something, and that's appreciated. I mean, so, you know, whether those efforts are premature in terms of the cost of, you know, doing, you know, that work, and that could turn out to be the case, I guess time will tell. I think we just need a little bit more of the other stuff here before we can really go too much further down the path here in terms of the engineering detail. Because, I mean, I have concerns in terms of the slope. I think everybody recognizes it's not ideal. And it comes down to whether it's acceptable. But these other issues, I think, weigh large right now in terms of us getting a better understanding of what the rights are, the legitimate rights of the property.
Well, I think the engineering, I mean, Paul's a good engineer. It is a very difficult roadway configuration. It's steep, the drainage is difficult. But I think because it is fundamentally for one lot, we can probably develop something that's acceptable, and it looks like we're kind of heading in that direction. But I have the overriding concern of what is or is not allowed here, so...
Have you guys looked into the title search at all?
Well, you know, all the indications were that, don't need to stand up or anything.
Yeah, you need the microphone. You don't have to stand, but you can need to...
All the indications we had is that all those roads up there were like this at one time. And that subdivision plan, again, was approved back in 1945. And in those subdivision rules of regulation, it states, that basically it states that, yes, whatever the town wants, we can try to give them, but if we can't give them exactly what they want, they need to allow something for access to this property. Now, we tried private road, E tried private road, but again, it wasn't a precedent. Now, the last meeting we had here, we were of the understanding that you wanted a road. So Paul went ahead and designed plans for a road. Now, again, there can only be one house up there. That's it. And I think it's safe to say, even with this whole road going up to where he's got it going, nobody's going to use it. You can see where the driveway is going to go in. You know, I mean, it's roughly 50 feet from Lake Shore Drive, 60?
Yeah, it's about 60 feet.
So, I mean, nobody is going to be using, nobody's going to be using this road for anything. It's kind of useless they even have it. But again, that right-of-way, yes, all the people within the subdivision or within that area have a right to use it, but so doesn't this party for building a house. And throughout, when it was approved back in 1992, lawyers in Betsy's files have indicated that the town has to allow something here. You know, regardless of the slope, yeah, we know it's steep, but again, it's only for one house. Paul has indicated to me, I don't know if he did to you, that even most of the drainage up in here, it's not going to go down the road. It's going to go off here into this low area, which is not going to be filled in, or off to this side here where it's very steep. All the water goes there now. I mean, minimal water is going down the road. But that road, to me, again, is not going to be used, only up to the driveway.
I have researched these properties that are by MacArthur Ave, and I've read the deeds to those properties. And all, every deed I've read just refers to the sideline of MacArthur Ave.
You know, again, I want to point out, all those roads are...
From the same time?
Excuse me?
I didn't mean to interrupt you, John. Were those deeds all laid out in the same subdivision plan that John was speaking of?
Well, these deeds are the deeds of these people's property. And it's all registered, the registry of deeds in Dedham.
In Land Court.
In Land Court.
I do think it was a little bit of a circular conversation, at least how I'm interpreting from Gino's comments back in May, which was basically saying that the opinion, which again was unsigned from unidentified person, but that Gino did find three court cases to support Gino's opinion on this. And he cited that in the memo that he gave us back in May. So he's, Gino's opinion, no, this is Gino, so this still isn't legal opinion. So I think there's kind of two major points of this development, and that's the first part, is this sort of this legal aspect of, is it even allowed? So there's been, again, unsigned, unidentified, which Gino, you know, kind of confirmed in opinion, but none of this is really legal. So there's that part that needs to be resolved. If it were legal, Gino was saying that the only way that this could ever be considered is if the road can be constructed to a level that's acceptable by our bylaws, acceptable to the planning board. And I think that's the direction you went off, is could you turn this road into something that could be acceptable by our bylaws? It has to have the right frontage, it has to be serviceable for its intended use, which is one lot, but it has to be serviceable for that, adequate for the intended use. And we didn't want to turn it into a private way. Those were the three basic points I had written down. Again, this was back in June. So adequate for intended use, appropriate frontage in front of the lot, and the public road. That's just half of it, though. I think, you know, and we can look at the engineering and look at some of these issues, but I still don't feel like we've really resolved the first half, you know? If, in fact, the first half assumed, presumed to be legal, but we still kind of need that, totally need that confirmed as well. So, you know, whether we want to review some of the engineering aspects to see if it's meeting those other conditions, but I don't think it's a full story yet.
I think you'd find, if anybody looked in the old file, there's other legal opinions that say why this should be developed or approved in some fashion. I'm not saying what or how by the town for allowing this purpose or this person to use this for a road for their property to build on. I mean, if you look at all the other roads up there, none of them probably conformed the zoning at the time they were put in. Yet you have 4,000, 5,000 square foot lots that have been built on. That's how most of them were configured back then. Preston Ave, Hunter Ave, some of those driveways, and some of those roads, Hunter Ave, their first road goes way up steep before it levels off to where it meets MacArthur. And all those roads were dirt roads, hot paths at one time, you know, way back in the early stages. And I'm not trying to go against any bylaws that you had put in. I'm just trying to say that I think if we get a lawyer involved, then they're going to find and tell you that, you know, this has a right to be built on.
Let me offer a thought in that regard. You say that the file is deep and old, and there's a lot of opinions in there from previous attorneys who have looked at this.
Correct.
Maybe what we ought to do as a board is have Ray and Betsy go through that file and cull that information, and give us a summary of what those opinions are, so that whether we can decide that sufficient basis, legal basis, to proceed, or whether indeed we wish these gentlemen to go off and get a further legal opinion, as Tom suggested.
I guess I wonder if that work is done by their attorney.
Well, done by somebody.
And I also wonder if, John, if you haven't seen some of these opinions and have come to that conclusion, and it's possible that, it's possible that Gino didn't include them because there might have been something about them that weren't as close to this case as you suggest. So while what you're suggesting makes perfect sense to me, I think that John ought to be present and say, these are the opinions I'm talking about. Read these and tell me that you don't come to the same conclusion.
I don't have any objection to that.
Again, back with, it was approved in 1992. Frank Rose, who used to be the town moderator, was, there was another gentleman that owned that at the time, was the attorney that had plenty of information, and I'm sure, I just talked to him a couple of years.
Frank?
Yeah. Maybe a month and a half ago, before the last meeting. And, you know, he basically says, I mean, if they don't approve something, you know, you'll get it approved in court. Well, we don't want to go there.
No, I understand. We don't want to go, we don't want to go there either.
We just want, that's why, you know, I suggested, and I'm still going to write a letter, I haven't done that yet, to selectmen, to put out an article that something like this shouldn't be developed on the road. Me being a resident as well as the agent for this client, it's kind of ridiculous to have a road there. But, again, last meeting, it was kind of said that the town had not changed any precedence, and they wanted to see a road here. Now, I could see putting a road there if there was more land that could be developed beyond this, but there isn't. And maybe we have to get an attorney in here to tell you that. I don't know. Now, I've been in real estate for 35 years.
Yeah. Lots are getting harder now, aren't they?
Yes, they are. Well, they are getting harder, but again, this is an acre and a quarter lot versus most of them being built on, or that were built on up there, are 5,000, 6, 7,000 square feet.
I think particularly where there are some concerns from abudders, we kind of owe it to the process to make sure that everything we're doing is legitimate and, you know, has been researched appropriately.
So what do you want?
Well, like you just said.
I mean, in terms of like researching the file, I mean, the concern, I think you heard a few folks, is just opening this thing up to some process that may not have an end to it. You know, so I think we need you to be more specific in terms of what documents you feel support your position, and, you know, whatever's reasonable for you to manage in terms of that process, you should manage as the applicant.
So I really should get an attorney here.
Well, whether an attorney's necessary, or I don't know, you seem to be pretty familiar with what the history is here and what properties may be relevant in terms of, you know, your project. So, I mean, I think what we're saying is, you know, the onus is on you to enlighten us and enlighten the folks here. I mean, a guy like Ray, he's working hard, but he's new to the town, so he certainly doesn't have that history. So if you can provide some information that, you know, results in a finite amount of work for the planning department, I think that's reasonable. But beyond that, I mean, I think, you know, we just can't agree to some process that we don't know.
So I think what you're looking for is, maybe I should get an attorney with cases supporting our side of this road that should be allowed to be developed or however way you would like it.
Are you suggesting that the idea of doing a title search for the road, piece of land, is just going to go nowhere?
That's...
It is Land Court?
It's Land Court. That's registered title. Now, right there.
Sounds like, usually they'd come up with an owner in Land Court. They don't usually walk out and say, these are the bounds.
Well, the owner states the name on the owner, and he states what all the people who buy land up there have a right to do. I don't think anybody's paying, I don't have any idea. I don't think anybody's paying taxes on it.
I'm not sure that case law is what you asked for. I thought, I thought the question went back to this piece of land, and who has ownership rights, and what can, what can those that have ownership rights expect to do with it? And that's the question that I think is the basis, and so...
I think it's more a conveyancing attorney or a title attorney as opposed to...
A litigator.
Looking for case precedent. We need to know who owns the right-of-way, and we need to know the limitations on construction placed on your client within that right-of-way. Do they have the right to do this? They have the right to use it, meaning drive on it or walk on it, but can they do extensive alterations to it?
All those other roads were under the same owner at the time they were done up there. And they were all probably cottages, other than the new houses, that were built on 5,000, 6,000 square foot lots. You've got to remember, all the people from Boston back in the early '50s would come out here and buy these small pieces of land for their summer resort and just put shacks upon them. All those shacks were converted to year-round homes on less lots than what we're, you know, approving now with town. So, I mean, I think there's a way to prove to you, not, and not very difficult, that this can be allowed or should be allowed to be developed, to be built on, by the people who own the land on the road. And it says that in the file. I'll go over this with Ray, and before I get an attorney. But I'm just going to tell the owner now, like she's probably going to have to get an attorney, because everything I've read, you know, everybody wants me to, you want proof. We're going to give it to you.
I agree.
Well, I think there's liability on behalf of the town regardless of what the decision is by the board. So I think it ultimately is going to result in some type of legal support.
Do you still have the notes I gave you?
I do.
When Gino said, basically, from an unknown source? Well, that unknown source was Frank Rose, who is, well, he was an attorney in the town of Hockley. He was a town moderator. This states who it's owned by. Pop, phrase. And if you read that again thoroughly, you'll see that it basically says it does have a right to be developed. No, or yes?
No. Gino's saying a right to access, which is different than a right to a building permit.
Well, again, right there.
So what we're asking for is what are the limitations? So what are the rights and what are the limitations? That's what we're looking for clarification on.
I mean, the problem is, what does get you the right to a building permit? It's a finding by the planning board that the road is adequate for the intended use. But to get there, you've got to do all those kinds of heavy construction. That's the problem.
Yeah. That's the circular nature of it.
Exactly, yeah.
If you look at the old plan on this, which is on there as well...
The microphone, we're getting.
Which is on there, it should be on that sheet as well. I mean, if all those people that originally owned those lots separately came before this board now to say, we want to put a road... board now to say, "We want to put a road in and put houses on these lots," are they not going, are they going to be turned down?
I don't know that you want to go down that path.
It's a theoretical question.
It was approved back in 1945, and under that approval, it doesn't require subdivision control law as it stands now. Now, it does say, yes, to try to act in the best interest of the town or how their new laws are now, but I think it basically says that if you can't do that, then the town should allow something for this person to have access to their property and be able to build on it. Again, you can drive up and down this road right now, and, and all those roads before that.
That's not necessarily the opinion that we're getting.
And I, just to give you my opinion, it's tough enough for me as a member of this board to make decisions based on modern day in terms of what I know, you know, when we start to put that lens on it, I, I can't do it. I mean, I don't, I don't want to do it. I won't do it. So I think ultimately, it's probably going to come down to attorneys, to your point. I mean, I think Mr. Houston, he has quite a bit of experience. I think he's given the board some, some opinion, which, you know, I accept his opinion in terms of what the board would likely need to see to be comfortable with a, a positive outcome here, from your perspective, so.
Well, I'll have to get that.
So a couple of questions. Ray, are you willing to maybe meet with them and kind of learn a little more history and dig into the files a little bit to give some direction about what the right kind of attorney and?
I would definitely want to work with him on the project files, figure out what we can figure out, but if we reach a conclusion that we think, okay, there needs to be more research done, and I'm kind of guessing that that's where we're going to end up, but if we reach that conclusion, then I would suggest that we all have the same opinion, that more research needs to get done, so that we're not coming back to another meeting saying, "Now what?" Can we agree to that?
Well, that's basically what we did here.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying that, because I don't want to do it again.
Yeah.
And I guess that leads to my second question. Does anybody want to spend any time looking at the engineering, assuming that the research is going to get us to that right spot and look at what they've done tonight, or does everyone want to wait for the first question to be answered?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Since you're just getting the engineering tonight, I would suggest that you have the consultant engineer take a look at this, make some recommendations, and come back to a future meeting.
You guys all right with that?
More than pleased to do that, sure. Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Is it all right with you? Yeah?
Ultimately, it's going to be a series of waivers.
I'm sorry?
Ultimately, there'll be a series of waivers that, you know, need to be hashed through if we went down that road.
Yeah. And I, I think we take comfort in the fact it's one lot, so, and the physical constraints are the physical constraints. So I think Paul is heading in the direction of trying to optimize what he's got. We're going to end up with a 10 or 11% grade, an 18-foot pavement, but again, for one lot, that's probably sufficient.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you're doing the engineering, then, you know, we could probably, if we're, when we look at the engineering, we could probably look at the whole, what questions are being asked, what, what questions we have to answer? What are we trading off? We never, I know what we're not going to get, but just lay it out. It's an 18-foot road, it's not a 24-foot road. It's a, it's an 11-foot grade, it's not a, you know, two or three foot grade, two or 3% grade, whatever.
So this is a public hearing. It sounds like we're going to continue it, but before we do that, if there's any comments from the public?
Give it back to, back to Michelle, would you? Jerry Carr. 69 Cuzola Ave., which is a 77 on the map. I, I think we have to determine whose land it is to start with before you even make any decisions, you know what I mean? It's like, because as far as I'm concerned, the person on Hunter Ave. was granted a variance for addition on his house from a letter from the town of North Park saying that that MacArthur Ave. was no longer a road anymore. He was granted an addition permit for variance for zoning board appeals from a letter that was drawn up from the town of North Park saying that MacArthur Ave. is not a road, so, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if it's not a road at that end, why is it a road at this end? That's just something you've got to look into too, you know? I mean, I want you guys to make a decision so Cindy and I can figure out where we're going to go. We're going to consult an attorney or not, but until you make a decision, we don't know what we're going to do, you know? That's all.
Anybody else? Okay. So we're going to need to make a next meeting so we can continue this.
Yeah, okay.
And it looks like we have a suggested date of September 9th, which is four weeks from tonight. Three weeks from tonight is September 2nd, the day after Labor Day. Thought?
It's fine.
It's a Tuesday? It's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. We, we had put that date out.
What do you want, the 9th?
Yeah, 9th, four weeks from today.
That's four weeks from today?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't do the 9th. I can't do the 9th. I could, I could do the 2nd, but I can't do the 9th. Or the 11th. The 11th, back to Thursday. The 11th? I could do the 11th if, if that works on Thursday that week.
Fine. Thanks for me. Jeff?
What do you think, sir?
I'm not sure, but go ahead without me. I might have a conflict on the Thursday.
Just concerned if it's just three of us.
I'll go back, go back to, any Thursday, you mean, or just?
No, I mean that.
Like, because the 4th, September 4th is another option.
How about the 4th, which is a Thursday?
Yeah, on the 4th.
That doesn't work, okay.
Well, if we haven't had a meeting for a month, you could probably get the stuff together three weeks ahead of time.
Oh, sure.
More concerned about the quorum issue here.
I know, that's what I'm concerned about, too.
Yeah.
Should we try and go earlier, back to the 28th of September?
That won't work for me, but I'm just.
How about Wednesday, the 10th?
Can you do it on Wednesday, Brett?
We could shatter all precedent.
I can't do Wednesdays.
Oh, you can't do, right.
I can never do Wednesdays.
Those days are usually going to count meetings.
How about Tuesday, the 26th, which is three weeks? You, you can't do that.
Wrong, wrong week for me.
Tuesday, August 26th.
No, I think, weren't you not available on the 26th?
The 9th is, is the only date that I'm not available on.
Somebody wasn't available on the 26th.
Maybe it was Steve, besides, besides me, maybe it was Steve or John.
Could have been John. Yeah, it was John.
He was sitting next to me at the time.
Remember, I'm available.
You're available on the 26th?
It's only two weeks from tonight, because I think it's about time.
What do you think? The other ones, Ray's the ones who are going to sit with John and go through that file? Do it tomorrow.
We're looking at two weeks or?
Tomorrow, I could do it tomorrow.
We're looking at two weeks or potentially five weeks? Do you guys have a preference?
What's that?
We're looking at like two weeks or five weeks? Do you have a preference?
Well, if we get, get it done two weeks, we'll, we sit down and if I finally have to get an attorney, then it's going to determine how long the attorneys are going to take the, do the research on the way up. Wow.
You'll probably know that after a meeting with Ray.
Can we set it for two and then postpone if we have to?
Of course.
Sure.
Why don't we do that?
Sure.
So we're looking at August, Tuesday, August 26th. Our only agenda item at the time, so we would say 7:30. Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
I can't move.
I know. He said so moved. Yeah. Second?
Second.
I don't think I can second either.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to continue it to Tuesday, August 26th, 7:30.
How about the week after that, just for the September meeting?
September, it looks like the, after that, we'd be out to September 16th for our next meeting after that, Tuesday, the 16th?
Yeah, that works for me.
16 doesn't work for me. I don't have a lot of days that it doesn't work.
Well, we hit them, huh?
We are hitting them. What about Thursday, the 18th of September?
That works.
Yes.
Want to do that?
So we've got two next meetings. We've got Tuesday, the 26th of August, and Thursday. Betsy, does that work for you, that Thursday, September 18th?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, so, the Winding Hollow, it looks like there's been a request for continuance. Do we want to put that out to the 26th also, or does that want to go out to the 18th?
I think they're working on, working with the water consultants.
Oh, good.
They actually have about a two-week wait to get the.
Engineering.
Engineering stuff done, and then they have to test the water, so they've got probably, they've probably got more than two weeks to wait, so the further back I think we push this, the better. That way we just don't keep continuing it.
Okay, so we need a motion to move that to the, or continue that to the 18th of September.
Okay, you want a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
All right, I move to continue the preliminary subdivision review and open space special permit for Winding Hollow, nine lots off 38 Holbrook Street until September 18th. And pick the time, Betsy.
7:45?
7:45.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, going to need a little help on what we're allowed to do on the next agenda item, Denham Street.
Nothing.
I apologize to let you know that we only have three member, three voting members.
I saw the first one.
You have? Andrea count? As an associate.
Andrea always counts, but yes.
I don't mean it like that.
I know what you mean.
Did you, did you attend all the?
I, I did, it's, this is only the second one.
This is only the second one.
Yeah, we're good to go.
All right. Strike that. We're having an attendance problem tonight, so we thought we were. We thought we weren't going to be able to go forward with you, but, please, go ahead. You're on.
Okay.
You just need to grab a microphone, please. Make sure the green light is on.
Okay, thank you. Richard Merrick in American Engineering. This is a continuation of a public hearing and a modification of an approved site plan at 242 Denham Street. Since the last meeting, we have made the changes that we talked about at the previous meeting, including widening the aisle here, putting planting strip in the parking spaces here. We revised the grading to reflect comments from Tom Houston, and we also redid the septic system. We talked about that, and we got the well location over here. As it turns out, the use that these guys have only requires half the septic that the original Al had done originally, because he was unsure of who was going to get in there. So we have plenty of room, we have more than 200 feet from the well to the septic system. So we're okay there. Other point of interest, we get rid of all the retaining walls over here, because we really don't need them. So that was kind of an issue with the site distance, so those are gone. The only thing that we don't have in hand is the lighting diagram, which they promised me in a day or two. The, the lighting on the site really isn't going to change that much. We, we just moved lights around, we didn't really, I don't think we added any lights. So the only real conversation would be the, under the island, under the pumps. And so we, we talked about, I think the way we can do it is work to a number that you guys feel comfortable with, because we show 12 fixtures, it might be 16, but the wattage of the fixtures can be adjusted to get whatever you want. You want sufficient lighting, so, but it's very localized, so it's, that, that kind of lighting doesn't spill out onto a Butters. So Tom had, you had suggested some standards that they like to see.
Well, I am familiar with illumination levels of like 50-foot candles under these, you know. Bylaw says five.
Yes.
So that's an issue.
So I would, you know, just, you know, if you want to allow like 25 underneath, I think we'd be fine with that.
I think I had asked that you use daily as, as a benchmark.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, he had a number of lights. He had 12, but, but you don't know what the illumination is, because the, the wattages could be different, you know?
But that can be measured.
It can be, sure, yeah.
Pretty simple to do.
Yeah, I could, we could measure that, yeah. Or I could check with them and see what they, what they.
It would just be nice to, as a benchmark, again, just because it's something we're familiar with and is a precedent, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
Did you say at the beginning, I'm sorry if I missed it, the impervious percentage?
We, we, we did adjust the impervious, and we talked to the building inspector about it. So we have applied to the zoning board to go up to 78.2%.
That's higher than last?
That's higher than last time, because we widened this at the request of Tom. We made a 28-foot aisle instead of 24 for the trucks. So we've applied, we have a hearing on the 20th. Don't really anticipate any problems, it didn't seem to be. Now, the only, oh, the only other topic of conversation is the sign. We talked to the building inspector, and he said that any dealings with the sign can be taken care of by you guys.
That's right, and that's something we didn't, that wasn't.
Right.
That you didn't have for last meeting.
So, so what we're, what we're requesting is two 24-square-foot signs, and then the rest being 12 to total no more than 100, which is the standard in town.
Do you have a visual, a graphic of it?
Yes, it's on one of the sheets. Hold on. If that picture that we gave you, it's just that the two top signs would be the same size. We'll have the, the Gulf and then the Dunkin' Donuts, those being the principles, and then whatever else we need on the bottom. So I guess that's.
The height of?
We'll stay with the 15, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we'll stay within the 100 square feet, and we'll stay within the 15 feet high, and we'll just work the size of the signs. I think the bylaw allows one larger sign, but building inspector said you have authority to do whatever you want there.
Did you catch this?
Yeah, Gino, Gino's opinion is that that permit has lapsed anyway.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we can renew it with the alteration in the sign size, I think.
This is the canopy that he's referring to.
Oh, is, is it the canopy?
Canopy signs, I mean, do you?
Oh, the one on the front of the canopy?
Yeah.
Okay. We haven't changed that, so.
So what's it going to say, Gulf?
Gulf, yes.
On both ends, or just on the Sharon Avenue?
Um, I would-
Both.
Both ends, okay, both ends, yeah. There's always a, you know, plain border here anyway, the way they design them, because it's because of the structure inside, so, that's, that would be just white if you didn't have a sign.
What is the square footage of the, well, I guess, it would vary depending on the company, but in this case, you know the company, so do you, do you know the square footage?
I don't, off the top of my head, uh... It's three, three and a half high, but, so, the-
You know, the point I want to make is, Gino's comment regarding square footage, he's probably basing it on company name-
Yes.
-you know, as opposed to Gulf, which is, you know what I'm saying?
I, I do.
Not Sanoco.
Yes, right, exactly. Yeah, Gulf, that was the shortest name we could find.
Yeah.
Well, you did, you did well.
I, I can get that.
I, I think that would take care of it.
I think so, too.
Yes. I'll get that information.
Yeah, okay. Parking, were you able to maintain the parking spaces?
Yeah, we, we actually increased them. Uh, we, uh, we, we, we had the vacuum. We all decided we didn't want the vacuum, noisy, you know, so, we do have the air station, but we've put three parking spaces in there. And the internal, uh, I went over it with the building inspector, is a little smaller than the original building, so we require less, but we actually have more spaces. So, we have, I think we, the total required now is 27, uh, 29, and we have 33. So, so we have extra.
Did you, um, do you happen to know what, if 29 is the required number, what percentage impervious that would be?
I don't, off the top of my head, no. Uh, it wouldn't be back to what, where we were originally.
No, but this, this concept called mitigation.
Sure, yeah. Now, what we did, we made the, this area here, pavers, to, to deal with that. And we talked about, we thought about doing the walkway, they were willing to do it, but they were worried that over time, that being a walkway, you know, the-
I see.
-pavements move and people trip and- So, might, might be a maintenance. So, we did take this area and make that pavers, to try to cut it down as much as possible.
Just in terms of process, um, where you have an open item here with the ZBA-
Yes.
-because of the impervious surface area, I would think this public hearing would stay open until that's brought to closure? Tom, what's customary?
Well, just for the board's knowledge, we have not seen the plan, the live plan.
You have not seen it?
So, I don't know if the board wants us to take a look at that, or whatever. Uh, but, um, you're asking, could the board make a determination absent the board appeals?
Well, I'm just wondering, process, you know, I, I'm not suggesting that that's what we do. I, you know, I think to the extent that we get as many questions answered and we listen to the butter comments and such-
Sure.
You know, it may not be a lot of heavy lift, lifting with you folks in this board going forward, so I don't want you to feel as-
Yeah, no, the, the only, the only concern that my clients have is, you know, go to another meeting, that's fine, and then go to another meeting to write the decision. So, if possible, I don't know who drafts your decision, is whether it's Tom or you guys, but if you could-
Gina, right?
If you could work on the decision, so that maybe at the next hearing, you could close it and vote it, uh, unless something happens at the zoning board, you know?
I mean, I, I, if the zoning board isn't finished at the next planning board meeting, I mean, I think you could handle it by a simple contingency in the decision, that, you know, the decision requires them to obtain relief for impervious area, a different relief than they need, so I think you can-
And you, you'll know whether they have granted it or not. They may not have issued the decision, but you'll know that, what they, the decision that they've made, so.
I think the couple of things that I'm interested in, Tom, looking at from the plan review, is the, um, lighting, which hasn't been done yet, and this whole, just confirmation of the well from the septic and all of that.
How do you-
I think are fairly minor points, but I, I would think I would appreciate that review being done. I mean, this is a modification, so I'm not saying we need to start from scratch on your review by any means, but those are kind of the two big things in my mind that have been-
Should we, I haven't filed that with the Board of Health? Should I file that with the Board of Health? Is that how he'd review it, or is he going to review it for you?
Well, we-
Well, we'll ultimately review it for the Board of Health, so-
No, I mean, I can file it with the Board of Health at the same time, I just-
That's a nice thing about a shared consultant, is you can kind of-
It is, it is.
Kind of meet both purposes at the same time.
Uh, I just didn't file it, because I wanted to be sure nothing else came up tonight that would change the plan.
What did we decide on, on a soil test for the large, we talked about, I forget what we decided.
Uh, we, we took your advice, and, uh, my client is, is willing to do a couple tests up here when they get a backhoe available.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, we'll do it.
I think it's, whether or not it's before the planning board decision, I think you probably want to do it before you start construction overall.
Well, that, that's kind of the way we approached it, yeah, we'll dig the test also. I mean, there are enough test holes for the septic anyway, so.
So, I don't know how folks feel about potentially trying to close things and get Gino working on a decision while these things are being final reviewed.
I think they're, they're minor enough to at least get Gino to work on it, I mean, there's only three things open.
I think you can just ask Gino to proceed with the draft decision.
It's, it's a draft, and-
Right.
Yeah, it's just a draft, so you to vote on, you know, when you're ready.
Right. I think so, too.
I was just wondering, um, if there was a trigger for the design review committee?
Well, yes, that last meeting, and it, I thought it did go in front of them again.
We forwarded, you, I think Betsy forwarded it to them, we haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything back from them.
They, they have reviewed it, I know that, because I conveyed the materials physically to them, so.
Okay. Let me open it up to public to see if there's any other comments. Again, if anybody has any comments, questions, just please take a microphone, anyone? Nope?
So, we like.
So, do you want us to close the hearing, then?
Can't take new information, right?
Yeah, no, I think you can keep the hearing open.
Okay.
No problem with that, it's just, you know, I'd just like you to proceed on the decision part of it, so that perhaps could close it and vote it.
Yeah, which we, we've agreed to do, yeah.
Okay. So, then we will continue, we have two meetings on the books, one in two weeks and one in five, I guess, September 18th, so August 26th or September 18th?
Do you have your Board of Appeals?
Hmm?
Do you have your Board of Appeals meeting?
Yeah, 20th. So, he'll just, they'll have done it.
Yeah, 26th, if we can, yeah.
Alright, so this will not be there?
You will.
Whispering in my ear.
We will be able to vote without you.
Yeah.
We can't, we have to have Andrea here now.
I, I, I will be away that week.
So, because of the attendance issue, you, um, on a, um, site plan decision, you need four, and so we have to have, now we're just down to four. The four of us here tonight have to remain on this through its duration.
Now, um, do you guys- Do, do you guys review that, allow review the-
He will have missed one.
He can watch it, though.
He can watch it.
Minutes, or?
So, it would get-
Did you review the audio?
Steve wasn't here.
So, there'd have to be a guarantee that John's here next time. John's going to be here on the 26th.
I'm sure he will be.
I mean, we could-
You thought there was somebody besides me that couldn't make the 26th?
If you, if you would, we'll, we can schedule it.
And then if there's an attendance problem-
If for some reason we can't come, then-
And you're kind of, yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, but we'd like to get attendance as possible.
Well, let's schedule the 26th.
Let's do that, and let's, if John is going to be here, let's, he'd have to make sure to watch tonight's.
He'd probably watch it, though.
Yeah.
Hi, John.
Everybody watches the plan.
Yeah.
Must see TV.
Excitement in town.
Is that a good thing, or a bad?
Alright, so, um, we'll say, do we want to say 7:45 for this one, since we have a 7:30 already? Somebody on August 26th moved to put this at 7:45?
Uh, I move to continue the, uh, public hearing for MacArthur, uh, excuse me, wrong one, uh, 242 Denham Street Dunkin' Donuts, um, site plan modification preview to August 26th at 7:45 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You doing alright?
Yeah.
Need a break? Okay, we're going to move on to the pre-submission review of Frederickson Road with you again.
Aha, yes. It's yellow.
Probably needs a new, try the other, there's another one right there on the table.
Uh, this one?
Is this one working?
This one? Does this work? Okay. Uh, yes, Richard Merrick, American Engineering, representing Frank Bondi, who is going to be proposing a subdivision of a 13 and a half-acre parcel at 36 Frederickson Road. So, we've been hired to do the engineering on it, and, um, this is a wooded parcel, I, you guys, I might have talked to you about this previously.
Yeah, but I don't know that Andrea was here, were you here when they got this?
It, it's a wooded parcel, totally wooded, there's a house and a barn at 36 here. I mean, the plus for this particular project is Frederickson is along Denham Street, so it allows connection through the Oakview Trail. So, what we propose is to extend Frederickson and Oakview Trail, and then put a couple of cul-de-sacs off to the side. Topography is, is interesting, this, this part of it is rolling, it's up and down, but it's fairly consistent. And then over here, there is a, there's a big cane, or a moraine, or something that comes right down here, and this area here is probably 20 feet lower. So, what, what we do here is the road would go down, and I think by going down, we'll be able to blend the whole thing together. Uh, there's, wetlands are at the corners, and, um, so, it doesn't seem to be a problem. Uh, there is, most of this is in the R1 zoning district, but there is a line here, and I think this lot would end up being in the R2. Uh, there's, there's, I think it's probably a distance off of Grove Street for the R2 district. So, um, we're just kind of presenting it to you, we'll get you a preliminary, uh, in a few weeks, uh, but I, a couple of questions. Uh, we've got a 30-foot road here, we've got a 50-foot road here, would, would we do a 50 through? I know that's your standard, but, yeah.
Yep.
30-foot road, you're talking about the right-of-way, not the sole of the road itself?
Frederickson is a little narrow right-of-way, yeah.
You're talking about the width of the right-of-way, not the actual pavement, right?
That's, yes, pavement's probably 18 feet, yeah. So-
I think you run the 50 as far as you can.
Yes.
What you use of it is another issue.
Right, yeah, right, yeah. So, um, now, the other thing is, your bylaw talks about little islands and the cul-de-sacs, are you in favor of those, or?
Yeah.
You like them?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Think you should use them for drainage.
Well, they're not very big.
I know, I think you can do it, though.
We can make them stone. Yeah, it's, um, it's pretty straightforward, like I said, all lots, you know, conform to zoning, it doesn't seem to be an issue. We try to stay out of the 100-foot, I know 100-foot buffer is sensitive to conservation, so, pretty sure we can work around it.
That line is the 100-foot that you have there?
This is the 100, yeah, yeah. So, I was planning to leave enough for rooms that you could build the houses and everything.
Are those wetland lines, um, defined, or are they preliminary?
This was, this was done recently by another engineer who, who was doing some preliminary work for them, so I, I've got Russ Waldron going out there to locate it, so we'll get that done this week, probably. And then we'll do the topo of the property, so we can fit it in, but, um, it is, you know, other than you might, you might move these roads up or down a little bit to work with the topography, I, I don't think you're going to do much else with it.
How many, um, houses total?
11. 12 if we can, but it looks like 11. Plus, one of them is existing, you know, so, so 10 new ones.
And you would keep that one, you wouldn't?
No, we're going to get rid of the house, yeah.
I see.
Yeah. But, and, um, pretty sure, there's certainly water on Oakview, is there water on Frederickson?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, good, okay, these would be septic, of course, and, um... So, we're just here for, let you know that we're working on it, in case you, you stop calling when we get out there with the surveys. Betsy will know what's going on. Uh, anything else we should consider?
What are you going to name the street? You're extending streets to different names.
Well, interesting, what I did, Tom, was I broke it here, so-
I, I think that's good.
That makes sense.
And Frederickson, yeah, because, you're right.
Uh, on a most serious note, you, you need to address abandoning the cul-de-sac on the Oakview there, whatever that's involved in that.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what's built there.
There is a, there's a cul-de-sac built, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, what happens to the land? Stays in the town? Public way?
I, I don't know, but what did we do on Winston or Churchill?
Yes, I was afraid you were going to ask that question. Um, that's the one that comes to mind, and I don't know the answer to it.
Yeah. I mean, we can certainly grass it, you know, put the curving in and grass it and get rid of the, and get rid of the pavement, but, uh, I don't know if you want to try to deed back the circle to them. We can think about that.
It's a board of selectmen question.
Well, there would be, actually, deeding back would be a board of selectmen issue, your road commissioners, right?
Uh, I think it's a town meeting, actually, conveyance of property.
Maybe.
Right, but there, there's got to be a policy on it, because-
The folks want it, or some other benefit to the town.
It's truly, they might not, you know, yeah. We've had that situation. People say, "No, thanks."
For the local, the, the adjacent?
Yeah.
People with the houses down there.
You know, I mean, they'll mow it and everything, but people are worried that it'll raise their taxes, because now they have-
More land.
-10,000 square feet more land. Maybe they're right, I don't know.
Is this a yield plan, or?
No, this is going to be a conventional subdivision.
Do you like conventional subdivisions? Do you think this land is right for a conventional subdivision?
I do, actually, um, I, it doesn't, I don't see it lending itself to a cluster, I mean, you have a conventional subdivision here, you get conventional here. This is a, this is a, a backlot, five-acre backlot, you get conventional over here. I just, I mean, I'll talk to my clients about it, but I, I'm not sure there's a great benefit to doing a cluster.
I, I don't know, because I, I'm just looking at it-
Right, right.
-of two dimension.
Yes, right, yeah, right.
This is my new-
There is a provision in the rules and regs, you're supposed to extend streets to facilitate development of adjacent areas?
Yes.
Find out if that's appropriate here or not.
Well, yeah, that's, actually, was one of my questions, so this is a, this is a backlot, five acres, uh, you know, um, do we, would it, would it justify extending this, the cul-de-sac? We could do it. Uh, over here, all we have is a house lot, so I don't think it's appropriate over there, but here, perhaps.
Is that a right-of-way that you've got up there, just a, yeah, that guy?
This is his frontage, you know, the, the, the backlots, they have 50 feet of width, and then they're five acres in the back.
Oh, okay.
It's a big, it's a big thing up here, yeah.
It's a state lot, I think it's permanent.
That's right, yeah, it's per- It's permitted that way, yeah. It's for sale.
In the case, you probably wouldn't need any additional frontage.
Oh, that's true, if it's in a state law.
No, they don't... Yeah, they don't need any frontage, right.
That's good, then, there's no point in extending the cul-de-sac.
Right, yeah, no, right.
It wouldn't just go down someone's private property.
I was going to make them as short as I could.
Ray?
I just had two questions. One was, I talked to the conservation office. We started talking about this subdivision, and they were saying that there's some locally identified wetlands, and the one up on the top right is one of those. So you might want to speak with them about that wetland and what your setbacks are to that. The second thing is, you know, this is going to be a cut-through now.
Yes.
When it wasn't before. And I know there's some residents that have already spoken to my office regarding that, and they're concerned about people flying through and now increasing traffic. One thought is, have you thought about any traffic calming techniques to maybe make the road turn a little bit more and sort of create a way that people will go a little bit slower through the subdivision and through these side streets?
One option that I looked at before, I've really, we've only been working on this for a few days, a couple of days. I mean, we could take Fredrickson, you know, and then have this come off like that, so you have an intersection. It really, it doesn't work well with the way the property is configured, but we could look at that if you thought that was an issue.
I think you might hear some things from the neighbors.
Sure, yeah.
Some concerns. And you're taking two dead-end streets, essentially, and now making it a pass.
Right, it's...
It's going to be a drastic change for their lives.
Sure, yeah, so...
But more than just a drastic change, it's also a subpar road.
The current Fredrickson.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. You know, it's a mixed bag. On the one hand, you do lose the cul-de-sac advantage, but there are some advantages to having through-street access, emergency access.
Absolutely.
Fredrickson is a 2,000-long, 30-foot-wide road, so a lot of potential there for problems, trees falling down, that kind of thing. But, yeah. So we will be happy to look into that when we're developing a plan for this.
Two sidewalks, one sidewalk? One sidewalk with mitigation?
How many are there now?
One, one on Oakview, nothing on Fredrickson.
Nothing on Fredrickson, yeah.
So the requirement here would be for one, the requirement would be for two, but we would ask for one and put sidewalk mitigation money aside? That would be my vote.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be my vote.
Sure.
I'm not that familiar with Fredrickson, but, you know...
It's pretty.
Yeah. There may be some off-site mitigation required, which could be somewhat of a trade-off for sidewalks.
It's actually a pretty good road. It does not appear as narrow as the layout would lead you to believe, you know. It feels like a regular road, country road, you know, in town. So it's fairly straight, and, you know, traffic flow is pretty good on it.
So this is not a public hearing, this is just a preliminary review, but does anybody here tonight have any comments or questions about this particular development? Okay.
I am Jane, 26 Fredrickson Road, and moved there because it was a cul-de-sac in the very year. And so I'm trying to understand, so it's not going, it's going to be a through-street?
Yeah.
It will not?
It will be a through-street, whether it's a straight-through-street, or whether we do something to make an intersection here, so people have to stop and...
But where is it going through? So the cul-de-sac at the end here, I don't know where Oakview is.
Through the woods. Go to the end of Fredrickson?
If you just kept going straight.
If you walk through the woods, you will be on the cul-de-sac.
There's actually a footpath that connects through the woods.
The street is going to cut through now.
Yes.
And then are people in the subdivision, they're going to come down Fredrickson to get to their homes, too?
They could.
That's the way, they're going to have access from different streets, right? One way to their house will be Fredrickson, and another side will be Oakview.
Oakview Terrace, yeah.
Terrace.
This is a big development over here.
And is there, I know I'm not familiar with the whole process, but when is this likely to, they're likely to start building? Is it going to be?
Spring.
In the spring?
That's what we're aiming for, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be a little fast. It sounds fast. That'd probably be the soonest.
It's not?
Spring would probably be the soonest.
Yeah, it wouldn't be any sooner than that, but we're hopeful, yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, just grab the microphone, please.
Grab the mic.
Is it not on? Can you just check to see if that button is pushed up, please? It's green, Donna.
Just yell.
Yeah, use this one.
Okay, I'm on, good. I'm at 26 Fredrickson with my wife Jane. One of my concerns and issues, besides the access and acres, is I'm not quite sure I understand in terms of Fredrickson itself, are you going to be changing the topo, the width? Are you going to be doing anything to the minimum?
Our plan is not to change anything on Fredrickson, except, there's kind of a cul-de-sac at the end, isn't there? So we'd probably take that out and make it just a regular width. Beyond that, unless the planning board decides that some mitigation needs to be done on Fredrickson, because it's now a through-street, that would be up to them.
And the number of homes you're putting in, you said is approximately 11.
11, 11, yeah.
What are the approximate lot sizes?
All of these are 30,000 square feet, 2/3 of an acre. This is an acre.
Because it's, I guess, my understanding, too, that the lot sizes on one side of Fredrickson are different than on the other side.
Yes. Fredrickson is in the acre side, and these, this is the 30,000 side.
Okay, so there's no cut-through or access through the backlots, then? It's just going through Oakview?
Oakview, yes, yes, just connecting to Oakview.
Anybody else here have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a thought. This is just off the top, and it's, from my limited time on the board, I don't have any reference to know whether we've ever done this as a precedent or not, but if the board determines that the size of Fredrickson is too narrow to really support through-street traffic, and we don't have enough money to put sidewalks in, would we consider just putting, making this a one-way entrance only from Oakview Terrace and putting an emergency-access gate there between the end of Fredrickson and the extension of Fredrickson? I don't know. It just seems...
It's too bad Steve's not here.
It could be a way to allow access to that 11-unit subdivision to Oak Terrace, and also provide emergency access to it from the other direction and avoid the town spending a lot of money mitigating the traffic on Fredrickson, because we don't have the money to do it. Have we ever done anything like that before?
We've done the opposite.
Say again?
We've done the opposite.
We've done the opposite?
Yeah.
Which is really spend the money to upgrade the road?
No, no, to connect roads together.
Provide throughs where you can, yes.
To provide through-streets where we can to connect neighborhoods.
You bring up a good point in terms of some type of traffic study.
Yeah.
You know, that would certainly seem to make sense here.
I really like the ideas of the traffic calming. I mean, I tend to think that, given how narrow Fredrickson is, it's almost more dangerous that it's the dead end that it is versus connecting it through. From what we've read from it, butters, you know, buses can't go down there. Well, a bus could go down there and drop children off if it could continue through, and emergency vehicles could get down there more safely, so...
Sure.
I think from a traffic engineering perspective, I almost, I almost think it would be better, however, with the added component of some traffic calming by turning it and maybe intersecting it versus through would then address the speed issue. So I think there's some real opportunities to help the situation.
Yeah, we can look into that. I, that was my first thought, actually, was to do something like that, because I knew there would be issues from the neighbors. But we'll take a look and see.
I have a novel idea.
I think...
Northwark has got a bunch of roundabouts that have been put in. What about a roundabout at that intersection as a traffic calming?
Here or here?
Right at the cul-de-sacs, yeah, where they intersect, yeah.
I think that would be effective. I think it would also be effective what Mr. Merrick had suggested, which is teeing the roadway in.
Sure.
I think what Michelle said is kind of the key, because when you do connect roadways like this, it's another issue, which is you may be attracting trips to that roadway that don't go there now. There may be a through function where you are creating additional trips that aren't generated on this site and don't exist on those roads now. So I think, you know, with the definitive plan, you probably want a traffic study that would look at volumes attracted to the corridor and also make a recommendation as to what improvements we might want on Fredrickson. I'm thinking primarily a sidewalk, maybe, as opposed to the, you know, what the traffic calming measures, whether it's teeing it in, which I think makes the most sense, or the roundabout, which is an alternative. You're not going to increase or decrease the volume of traffic, you're just going to slow it down.
Slow the speed, yeah.
So I think we do need to have an idea on how the volumes are going to change in addition to generation here, and site distance problems identified.
Yeah, like I said, I drove Fredrickson, and it seems, you know, pretty straight, pretty wide open. It's not super wide, but it's not super narrow either, so we can do some work on that.
18 feet of pavement.
I don't know, I was just guessing. It does not appeal like it's a super-narrow road, yeah. I mean, some places like you do.
So I'm thinking the traffic study is going to be...
Yeah, will...
A critical component to do, you know, sooner in the project rather than later.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll get somebody on board, so we'll present the preliminary, and we can have things to talk about.
If Fredrickson connects to Grove, is it?
Grove, yes, yes.
So we'd want to go all the way out to there, I would imagine, collect at Grove and...
Yeah, you know, an analysis of it, yeah.
Probably almost halfway, I would guess.
Is it halfway? Oh.
Maybe halfway between Union Park.
Yeah, about halfway, I think, yeah.
Anybody else? Any other, if, another?
So when you're talking about sidewalks, are you talking about sidewalks on both sides of Fredrickson?
Yeah.
Well, we'd probably talk about one side, because you don't have the right-of-way, I think, to get on both sides. And we'd have to, we'd have to look at what would be feasible in terms of the length of it. Okay?
Okay, yeah.
All right.
All right, so we'll, when we get the preliminary ready, we'll submit it, we'll have another go-around.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone good? Ready? All right. Next up is the Turner Street to Massachusetts Avenue issue. We have somebody here talking about that? William Greaves?
I am.
Okay. Do you mind just grabbing a microphone, please? Thank you.
I'm Bill Greaves on 42 Turner, the last house on the flats. And when Christine Estates was created, in the conception was that Turner Street was going to be a through-street. And the town gave it to my parents, they said they wouldn't do it, and they moved on and they...
Excuse me, sir, there's a problem with the microphone. If you'd hold that up a little closer, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So it's time for the through-street to go through. There is no cul-de-sac. There was a small cul-de-sac, and the planning board decided to eliminate it at the time of creation of Christine Estates, to make it a through-street. And it's difficult, that part of the street, it's a long, dead-end road, no turnaround, and...
Except for your driveway?
Pardon me?
Except for your driveway?
Except for mine. I've always allowed, because it's nobody's fault, you know, the people who are stuck there came to that, I don't, so I let them turn around, but there's no reason, or I can't see any reason for it not to be, to go through. It's all laid out, the town owns the land, it's taken, working with the subdivision for... Depending on what the town wants to do, I think it's a minimal effort on the town. So I'm requesting that it's looked at and considered to be a through-street as it was designed. I know there's going to be some opposition. Not sure why. It's better for the highway department, the police department, the fire department, anybody that needs to go north from there. So I'd like the board to look at Christine Estates' plan and how it was drawn, and see if you're agreed with the time. I don't want to be the turnaround forever.
Michelle, if I might, there was a word you used, you know, designed versus intended. I mean, could you speak to that?
Oh, the part of the approval of Christine Estates was that it was, it had to be a through-street for the approval, and...
Turner.
Turner.
Well, engineered, you know, to be able to accommodate vehicles versus intended to be a through-street, I'm not sure that those are the same, is what I'm saying. So this is where it becomes very important to understand.
It's an old subdivision plan, probably many of you people weren't on the board when it was conception, you were. Are you familiar with that?
Christina?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the dead-end?
Yes, and you spoke of, you spoke of police and fire, but you didn't mention the joggers, who would have a much easier time if Turner was open.
Joggers are okay. Actually, joggers can go around the, they can go around the gate now.
So it was laid out, and I don't recall, and it was a, we did put a barrier that was meant to be able to be opened in a secondary access in an emergency situation. So I don't recall, and it's, the topography is such that it doesn't need a lot of cuts and fills, that I recall, so I don't recall if it's, I don't recall if it's just a planned layout, or if it's an engineered pavement that never got constructed. We'd have to check the plan, but it was absolutely the intent, and it was actually after the board's decision that your mother brought forward the request to not have it open, and so it was just kept closed.
So you're saying that the deed was recorded one way, which you're saying is in conflict with the decision?
Nothing was in, I don't know if it was in conflict, or if it was just agreed that we would wait. I don't know if it was a conflict.
Because it's recorded as an emergency access, so the deed...
It is, yeah. That's, this does look... Yes, this does look like your property. Yeah, and that's, there it is, is a 30-foot, 30-foot wide.
Yeah, they took the full street length, the street is actually built.
Yeah, that...
This is built, it's not paved.
And that's where the gate is?
This is your, this is coming in from Turner?
Right.
Right.
So you're saying it's paved?
No, it's not.
No, no.
This is not, this is road-based.
Okay, it's road-based, okay.
And pretty disrepair.
So I believe, since this was brought to our attention, Ray, that you've been doing some work on this over the last little bit?
Oh, I don't know about work, I've been talking to people about it because once, once we talked about it at the last planning board meeting, word got out, so people started contacting my office. So I've talked to three, four different people about this. And I did pull the Christine Estates, which...
I was wondering if you dug up any history of what was approved and sort of the history about why it was closed down and not connected, any of that?
I wasn't able to get, you know, all the facts. The minutes have only so much information in there. And it didn't, it didn't seem to lean one way or the other. I think, for me, the biggest, the biggest piece of evidence I found was there was a petition signed by a couple, at least a couple of dozen people back when this was an issue, whether to open or close it. And, you know, the people were against opening it up. So, and I'm guessing that people still have that same opinion based on, you know, the response, just as a topic at the end of our planning board meeting that we got, so. I don't think that's too helpful, but my apologies.
That's okay. No apology necessary.
Do you think that was all part of the public hearing process? You know, when the project was reviewed and ultimately approved? Or do you think it was perhaps subsequent to that?
I think it was probably part of that whole discussion at the public hearing. I think there was some, there was some desire not to have it closed up. I think Mr. and Mrs. Greaves also acquiesced to that and said, you know, okay, we won't open that up. There's another way to get to Massachusetts Avenue. When I did read it, it did talk about this being an accessway, a temporary accessway to Massachusetts Avenue before it was extended. But I didn't get much more information on that.
And that was as long as she was alive?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see that, but I just, you know...
So I'm asking it, I think it's time to be opened and it's time that I'm not the cul-de-sac. And so plows, highway workers, anybody going down uses my driveway. And I wanted to cease. And I have, I think it'd be advantage, I would use it myself if I could go north. I think it, at least the local people who live on it, which is quite a few homes now, if they wanted to go north, they could. And I think it would cut down traffic more than it would make more traffic. That's my opinion.
You have signage there, not a through street?
Yes. Bob McGee, kind enough, has put that up because he knows what I go through. He know, his, his equipment has a difficult time and uses my area. So we've asked, I've asked him to do what he can to slow that down. It's not a cure, the cure is to open it, but it is helping. But there's still a dozen homes on this side that are not through. And there's no cul-de-sac. There's no way to turn around. None.
Our paperwork shows that it was deeded as emergency access.
Yeah, I might have misspoke. I think I was, I think it was just emergency, it was just emergency access and that's why, that's why you've got the base in place. I just thought that...
As long as my parents were alive.
Yeah.
Indeed. We're looking at the deed that was pulled from the registry.
So it...
It doesn't have any condition, it's just said that that's how it's to be used.
That's my plea and willing to...
Do you have any documentation that you can recall that noted that it was just for the period of time until your parents had passed?
It would be, it was a long time ago, Matty won. And so I don't think I have any of that. I would think that the town would have it.
Well, we have a, we're pulling from the deed which is dated in...
It was, it's on all the GPS. It was always considered a through street. And as long as we're working toward to get it to be a through street, I'll still accommodate people and otherwise I'm going to close my driveway. And then people won't be able to come through.
Well, I mean, I'll speak for myself. I mean, I sympathize with your situation. I'm not sure how much can be done to improve your situation short of, you know, opening it up to Christine Estates. But, you know, in terms of the greater good, I think ultimately with me, that's going to prevail in terms of what the greater good is. So I would just want to understand the benefits better than I do right now.
I don't think there's any more benefits in any other dead-end road anywhere in town.
No, the benefits of opening it up.
Yeah. I can't see any reason why this should be one end, one dead-end road with no improvements at this point in time. You know, I think it's time for it to be a through street. And that's just, it's just time. My parents are both passed away and that was the agreement. And there's no need to be a difficult area anymore.
Well, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but ultimately I'm looking for the greater good here and that will influence my pick.
I'm fine with that. I'm just saying that I've done my share for 10, 15 years.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
And I don't think it's a lifetime requirement for me.
I think from my perspective, I'm really kind of trying to lean towards what the decision was and how it was intended when it was deeded. Because there's always differences of opinions. So I absolutely respect your opinion and I understand all your points, but there's lots of other opinions that are exactly counter to yours and I respect and I understand their opinions as well. So to make a decision that one opinion's greater than the other is not really our job to weigh in on whose opinion is more right. It's really for us to look at what was, what was approved, what was designed, what was decided, what's in the site plan decisions, what's in the deeds. So we kind of look at it more from a factual and legal perspective. So that's how I prefer to look at it.
I get it. And I can't, I can't imagine you finding that the requirement for Christine Estates to be approved, that that was to be a through street. It makes perfect sense to not have a 900-foot dead-end road with no cul-de-sac. And now's a chance to get rid of that.
Unfortunately, that common sense should have prevailed at that time. It's not for us to override that common sense at that time. That's not, again, not our role.
I think Christine Estates is how it was. And just understand that the turnaround to where I am will cease.
Well, I share my colleague's concern with at least reviewing as best we can what the history was on the approval for Christine Estates. And I also share your feeling that we ought to look at the greater good that will be accomplished by opening that up. So just that.
That's fine. And I'm asking you to review it and to figure that out. And you can look driveway, you can see the repair of the street, you can see that the turnaround where it's in.
Yeah, I've turned around in your driveway a couple of times.
Sure, everybody has. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is anybody here with any questions or comments?
I'd like to say something. Take the mic. It is on. My name is Bob O'Parch. My wife and I live at 30 feet Turner Street, at the end, the Greaves property. We've been there since 1980 and we kind of like the way it is. It's nice and quiet, it's been there. I didn't like necessarily homes being built behind us, but they were built. As far as people driving up the street, people drive, turn around in my driveway also. It's been that way since we've been there. And, you know, I've been there, my wife and I, we like the peace and quiet. And opening it up, as far as I'm concerned, is only going to be more traffic. Now, I don't know about fire and I know even a cloud of streets, they have to turn around someplace and they ride down the street and they turn around and build's property. I don't know how to change that. But again, I'm not for progress. I listen to my building subdivisions in this town. I see it all over the place and, you know, been here since 1980, raising my kids. It's progress, I know it is, but still, I cherish my peace and quiet and my privacy. I'm not looking for joggers to be jogging by or walking their dogs or whatever. I know that's happening, but, you know, I've been there and it's been quiet. Bill's raised cows next to us for years. It's nice. Again, I like to keep it that way if we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Martin, 40 Turner Street, also a neighbor of Bill's and Candy's. My wife and I bought on Turner Street several years ago and we bought there specifically for one, for a couple purposes, but the main was the farm piece that we bought there. And we did our research before we bought. And what we found was not only eight acres of beautiful land and a barn and farm there next door that Bill and Candy have, but we did the title research and so forth. And I think you've alluded to some of it. If you look at the covenant that was drafted by the planning board and endorsed with that decision back then, it does specifically say that it would be a deed recorded, I think you have it there. It talks about, I think it's parcel F, I could be wrong on the parcel. And I'll just cite page three of 16 on the covenant. Item four, it says, "The emergency vehicle access identified as parcel F shall be graded to allow safe passage of emergency vehicles, the property for which shall be deeded to the town," which I believe it has and it's been recorded. "Appropriate balance shall be installed with location for the same shown on the plan with location reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to endorsement." So prior to my arrival in town, that all took place. We did our research, we found the public records, we felt very comfortable with what was there, what wasn't there, what could be developed. Our barn is, and Bill can attest to it, right off the road, horses come out, they tend to go to his lawn because he's got a much nicer place. But when they get out there, right basically on the street, there's some trail access and so forth, it's very, it's a very old country road. I have a couple of ideas that may help the Greaves, maybe resolve the issue. But I think legally, look at that document, we certainly did, we relied on it. There were some people in Christine Estates who alluded us to this tonight who couldn't be here and they were very concerned because they just moved in at what would be a corner lot if the road went through. I think it was a parcel and not reserved as a roadway intentionally, based on what I'm reading, unless it's something off the record that I'm not aware of. First of all, and I'll take it, the width of it would meet your standards under your bylaws for roads, whether it's a secondary or a primary or whatever type of road, regardless of payment width. It wouldn't be wide enough to accommodate that under your, under your rules and regs. I understand a waiver could be granted, but the, we also, several years ago, were concerned about that when we heard rumblings that it could be open. We documented a timeline going back four or five years with Butch Vito, we inquired with him. We can pull out all the documents. No, that's not going to be open. It would be, we always knew it would be open for emergency access. And that makes a heck of a lot of sense, obviously, for all, for all the right reasons. We are certainly not opposed to it being open for emergency access. That makes sense, that was the plan. There's no reason not to, in my opinion. But for regular vehicular traffic, it wasn't approved that way, we relied upon it, we made our decision based on that. I don't, I think it's become a restriction now. I have other opinions to that effect relative to Bill and Candy's issue with the driveway. They're right. People come down, turn around, turn around everyone's driveway, probably his the most because he's at the very end. We are willing, at our barn, which is right next to Bill's property, if it alleviates the problem or helps, we're willing to put signage up, dead end, stop, turn here. People can turn around in front of our barn and exit. That's fine with us. We certainly don't want the throughway for traffic. We would certainly not be opposed to it, obviously, for emergency vehicle access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to ask the chairman, please?
Sure.
Ask the chair, direct it to the chair, please.
How do you feel about...
Direct it to the chair, please.
Oh, that's, you know, that's fine for cars.
Could you stand a quick microphone? Thank you.
It's for the folks at home, really. We can hear you.
That's fine for cars, but what about plowing? What about the highway trucks? What about emergency vehicles? And I understand you like the dead end of the old road. I get it, you know, I do get that. But if somebody has to stop and turn around and go back down by your house, that's twice the traffic. If they went through, they would go on their way. And so I have a problem with turning around and going back and forth, the same cars all the time. And that's my opinion, you know, it doesn't mean, I just, I just can't see it not being an improvement, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim Martin, 40 Turner Street. Relative to the snow plows, to me, in a snowstorm, to me, that qualifies as an emergency situation. And I would say that snow plows could go through to plow, so they wouldn't have to turn around. And that, because you'd have to plow it anyway so the other emergency vehicles could get through. So they wouldn't be turned, the trucks that had access that wouldn't have a need to turn around. And as far as traffic study, yeah, people would go through one time at that hour, come back the next morning and drive back. And if I could move my barn back, I can't. It's there. It's right off the road, the road is very narrow. It just wouldn't be safe for my situation and I think it'd be more of a hazard. I think if people got the headache of coming down, turning around in front of my barn and going back, they wouldn't do it regularly. They'd do it one time and the snow plows could go through. That's how I would look at it.
Okay, thank you. Is everybody else set on this one?
Yeah.
All right.
All set?
Yeah. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item.
I was checking chairman a long time ago. Good thing it's moving.
We're on to Bella Rosa Stables.
Folks, it's soon as before.
I need just a minute to make a quick...
Yes, sure. Okay. We're just going to take one quick minute, we'll be right with you.
What's the status of Turner Street in here? Is this paved?
No, no, it's just a dirt path.
So who's going to pay for it?
From here to here, it's not paved.
So who's going to pay for it?
The town. That's the other question.
I'm just curious where the pavement's at. I think it's right around there.
Yes, there's a gate, actually, in one of the drawings.
Is this the layout for cul-de, what is this?
I don't know what that is.
It looks like it, doesn't it?
It looks like a layout for cul-de-sac.
It might have been the cul-de-sac that was proposed when it was. What if they put a cul-de-sac here?
Well, you could do, you could do a turnaround subway to keep people from turning in that guy's driveway. That could be a public thing, that's not a problem.
It's going to take somebody's land, though.
That's his, it's Greaves' land.
Yeah, which one is his, man?
He's right here.
Right here, on both sides, actually. He's here and there.
Because the mother, the mother's property and the son's property.
Yeah, they own all that land with Christine, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It, it was set up for emergency access and I didn't realize, probably because I'm getting older. When I first tried to go through there, you couldn't, bikes and pedestrians couldn't use that. couldn't use that, this connection.
Yes, it cleared the path.
And so now he's cleared a path, now he's putting the pedestrians. So it is being used as it was intended. It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be a walking path.
A path and emergency.
And emergency, plow as an emergency is a really interesting concept.
I don't see why a plow could.
Well, plow has, because you're gonna keep the emergency way open.
Exactly. It's a good point.
Right. So it's, you know, that's a, that could be another municipal service being done.
It's a DPW kind of.
But the second thing that was happening here is that.
Well, the only problem with that is there, there is no, there's no pavement or anything here.
No, it's rough.
So you'd have to, I'm not sure, is there even gravel there?
I think, I, I, I remember it being, having a little bit of a, a little bit of a hill to it. I know you should.
I told them.
You're close to the nine.
Yeah, maybe it's for weeds coming through it, maybe.
There's lots of things growing.
Well, there's lots of things that need to be cut back and are they good?
You can plow.
Probably, probably, I'll let her say on this, probably pave it.
I'm not in favor of the three paths, but I do think the plowing is a good point made.
But if it's truly intended as an emergency, it should be paved.
This is a hot potato. He's in the wrong venue. He should go to the selectmen at the street commissioners, announce that what they want to do.
Well, to be honest with you, that was probably why, I mean, the covenant did turn with great good, maybe in terms of.
Sounded like a selectman.
You know what I'm saying? Because.
Do you want to board?
The town wanted to do something, because it was clearly in the, in the town. But I don't see.
Christina, Christina's accepting public ways now. The planning board has nothing to do with it.
Well, there are two things, there are two things that are, that are, that are off the site here.
There you go there.
There are two things that are off here.
Convince an argument, rather than return.
Well, but the Turner also has, remember the really big bedrock that comes into the right of way? Turner is a hard road to ever.
Turner is a tough street.
It's, it's a hard road to ever be a better street than it is right now. So that was one reason not to put vehicle traffic on it, is because we could, it would always, it was always gonna be subsurface. Yep, it was always gonna be a bad road. I know, but it's like, it's more like diamond.
Yeah.
You know, like you really shouldn't ride down that street for more than, at more than 20 miles an hour.
Because you're gonna, you'd have to fill the wetlands.
And it really should be one way.
To make it wider, you'd have to fill.
And, and between the bedrock and the wetlands, but, but since then, we've had, you know, our favorite developer has come onto this, this street, and so.
He's made improvements.
So he's made so much, so many improvements to it. So, so the situation becomes different, so we've accepted that street.
My general advice is, from an engineering point of view, the more through streets, the more ways in and out, the better, in terms of.
Yeah, it is, it is DPW. DPW and board of selectmen.
Turner Street's a tough street.
It is.
Well, but it might be the responsibility.
I've lived in the town for the first of 50 years, I've only driven it twice. I don't think I've ever been up to the end, I've been by.
Yeah, you're right, I did want to see it.
Okay. Bella Rosa Stables.
Hi, my name is Howard Bailey. With the captain's circle, we're the principal owners of Bella Rosa Stables, and we stopped into Town Hall, the city building conservation and planning, for what we think is, even if necessary, a minor modification to the originally proposed access driveway for the property that Bella Rosa currently uses. Spoke with Ray, your planner, and he, I think, broached a subject at one of your previous meetings, and then suggested that I come here and discuss it some more with, with the board. What we're proposing here is our proposed driveway, which is not constructed, is to come in here and down to the existing stables that we have here right now. The one sheet that I have there, we can kind of color it up a little bit so you can see it a little bit better. We, in accommodating the town when we discussed the access property to the town-owned land, it pushed our driveway a little bit further. And with that happening, we get into a little more challenging grading stuff because the land starts to fall off. And along with that, there were probably four to five large trees that now would have to be cut that maybe wouldn't have had to been cut later. So then when we started laying out the roads within our own stable that we're doing, that have nothing to do with what we're discussing right now, it dawned on me that these points would be going around the entire property, and we only have a short connection right here to get to this road. We own the frontage from here to here, in this particular area here, I haven't actually looked at and measured, I should have, but it's somewhere in the order of four to 500 feet of frontage that we have on the public way right here, which is still, everything is in the town in Norfolk that we're discussing. We also own the frontage now from here to here. This was always talked in all the meetings about being a vista for a view across this pond and out to the different fields and so forth. In fact, there's language in there that says, at some point, I guess, Pulte will plant some low-growing shrubs, trees and stuff, so you can still see over them and meet your landscaping requirements. So our proposal is just to eliminate this, we're gonna still utilize this only for our utilities, because our water, our sewer, gas, and electric, and cable will be coming down here. But seeing as we're gonna construct this anyways, we would then just use this for an access point, which would be the access point for the whole stables. And then as we started looking at it, there's eventually going to be a house here. What was originally proposed, my understanding is the house is gonna be more to this side right now, only because I saw they had it staked, and where it's staked, every single headlight that comes out of here is gonna be right in their backyard. So we know that's gonna create a nuisance when that house is built, it's not right now, and we just don't want to have to deal with that where somebody who buys us, all of a sudden starts complaining about it. You know, we have people that do what we call night check, they come in anyways from 10:30 at night to midnight to walk through the barns, make sure no horses are in trouble or anything like that, and they just do it as a, on a regular, every single night they do it. So they'll be driving in, we generally get all the people out of this barn, we don't like them to be in there any later than 9 o'clock at night. Now, during daylight saving time, it's not an issue, but once we switch, those people that are in here using the indoor ring, riding, or whatever they're doing, are all gonna be coming out this way. So this way here, there'll be one house built over here, I haven't seen the staked location, but as you can see, the driveway moves away from this house here. So with this topography here also is very flat. When I say flat, we, we have an incline coming from here up that can vary from probably as high as 10%, some areas down to five or six. This way here, it's probably a maximum of worse than 5%. So everything with all of this makes sense that we could save the majority of the trees, and we have not interfering with the eventual homeowner here that will be, I mean, I listen to people here complaining that I bought here because of this and that and so forth. So, so we're trying to avoid that, we're trying to have a safer in and out of the property for plowing, for everything else, and it just makes sense, so.
You know, what would be helpful to me is to get a thorough understanding of what the property is being used for and what's intended, because we do have some concerns being raised right now because of the activity, extent of the activity, particularly on weekends, where we've got some type of horse shows and things that might be going on. So, you know, when these projects are presented to the board, there's a public hearing process that really is integral and critical to a project where butters and folks have an opportunity to, you know, give their opinion and express concerns. And that's really the nature of my question and concern to you, is, you know, what, what are you doing here on this property, and what do you intend to do?
I can answer that right now, and Kathleen Kiderka can answer also. We're doing nothing different than has been done since the 70s. It's a horse farm, it's been a equestrian center since the early 70s, it's still an equestrian center, horse shows have gone on there since the 70s.
Maybe three a year.
So in terms of speakers and, you know, enunciation, this type of stuff, I mean, is, is all that infrastructure been there, has been used right along?
The speakers that are there are all portable equipment that a judge can announce the ribbons that these chief will put their hard work in and receive.
You know, I understand, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to balance your interests in terms of what you're trying to accomplish and some of the other competing.
What does that have to do with the driveway location?
Well, I think until we get a full understanding of what the intended use is, I certainly am apprehensive about doing anything different than what was discussed. I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, let me finish. What was discussed and decided is part of a public hearing. Okay, I don't see Pulte here this evening, so I'm not sure, is this something that they're interested in? I haven't seen anything from Pulte.
I don't know, I don't discuss anything with Pulte.
Well, another reason for concern, at least on my behalf.
It could be a lot of people's concerns.
I mean, you, you know that this has been a difficult process the past few years, you know, with the, all the requirements for the subdivision that is taking place there in terms of the blasting and things of that nature, and so you've got residents that have been inconvenienced and they, you know, they've, I think they've been dealing with it. I'm, I'm saying that there is a subdivision taking place there, okay? And because of blasting and, and just heavy equipment and such, you have folks that are abutting that property, obviously, they're very sensitive to what's going on, okay? Because I'm not, please, listen, please, please, I'm making a factual statement that I won't think that you can dispute, that you've had a tremendous amount of activity taking place, you, you figuratively. Norfolk, we, Norfolk, the town of Norfolk has had a tremendous amount of activity taking place on that site. And so you have abutters that have had to contend with this on a daily basis, and where that construction takes place, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday, now the weekend activities are that much more of a concern to them because they feel that they don't even have, you know, peace and quiet on the weekends. So these are things that we're aware of, and at least me personally, I have to take that lens to this in terms of what you're interested in doing. What you're proposing may very well be an improvement, maybe, I don't know, I'm just saying that without going through a more comprehensive process, I'm personally apprehensive about agreeing to some change here which could perhaps make something worse. In reality or in perception. Those are my comments.
May I speak now?
Yes. Yes.
First of all, when you, you make it sound like the blasting is my fault.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said, Mr. Bailey.
You're saying there's a lot of sensitivities in town, a lot of people with a lot of sensitivities, and because this road was originally approved in a different way than what you're looking to do now, that was vetted through a public process. We're out of that public process now, so we're, we're trying to say, okay, we're out of the public process, but how can we still take into consideration the public's input? Because they're not here, because it's not part of the process.
You know, out of the public process, it's a driveway change of one location to another location that we have more than adequate frontage. Ms. Kiderka here, my partner, we discussed it several times, she said, can we build the driveway where it is? I said, yeah, we can. And if we fail that the direction of this board is that they don't think it's an improvement and that it requires any additional engineering or paperwork or anything like that, we will just simply build the driveway where it was proposed. Now, in the process of that, we're gonna be annoying a future home in there, number one. Number two, we're gonna have to take down probably, I haven't counted them, I should have counted them, but I thought it was a no-brainer, to be honest with you, that. I don't want to go taking down 24 to 30-inch trees that are necessary for a driveway. That's already happened in that project. I didn't give Pulte permission to take down and clearcut the entire project. I helped permit this project when I was one of the owners, as Kathleen Kiderka was one of the owners, and it was never intended to be that. Somehow, whether, I don't know if it's board or selectman, I don't know if it's this board, they convinced this board to do all of this blasting that is not necessary. I'm a developer, that's what I do for a living. We happen to own an equestrian center. And we have worked diligently to keep trees in that project. And I'm not gonna go take down more trees when there's a remedy to solve and fix that particular problem. And that's the only reason I'm here.
And just for the record, Mr. Bailey, there's a tremendous amount of ledge up there. And in terms of the tree clearing, this is something that the planning board worked collaboratively with Pulte to try to understand how best to establish a responsible tree clearing plan, because ultimately, if you're gonna blast, you're gonna have to, you're gonna be taking out trees in the process of doing so. So I'm not saying this for your benefit, but folks that may be watching this, to understand that this wasn't done willy-nilly, that they're not just up there cutting trees and blasting without having some, you know, some type of discussion and protocol with the planning board. So I just had to set the record straight.
I'm not here to bash Pulte or anybody else. I just happen to be a developer and I know the proper way for things to be done. So I'm making my opinion and my statement on that issue. We've had to deal with the same thing that the abutters have dealt with, no notification of blastings, people literally knocked off their horses from blasts, so you don't have to convince me about neighbors' concerns, we've gone through it. Our barn managers have been bruised and everything else from it, so, you know, there's some ill feelings toward that which have nothing to do what we're here for tonight. So we're really drifted into something that should be a fairly simple thing, that even Pulte, if consulted, should say, you know what, that makes a whole lot of sense. That house, when it's built, is gonna have lights coming in their backyard for as long as they live here and the next person that owns it. You've got an opportunity to fix it, and you can save some trees.
So without going too far down the road, pardon the pun, I mean, if, if vehicular traffic is using that driveway, I can see, you know, a longer distance off of an approved roadway that perhaps the vehicles will be traveling, I can see changing direction and such in terms of headlights. I don't know what the impact of that is for people that will in the future be living in proximity to that driveway, it looks like it comes pretty close to the, what will ultimately be a street, so.
This is the one house, the one lot, that it will have an effect on. These houses over here, if Pulte doesn't take the grade down too much, these are all elevated above the road. And where this comes out, it's making a 90, no different than their driveway would make onto this road also.
Appreciate your comments, I, I just.
This driveway coming out of here is gonna, at this point, is gonna be at the same house location, across the street.
Everybody else have any questions, comments?
The, the roadway which you've colored in here yellow, does that exist at the moment, with the exception of the, of the connection to Hemingway Place?
Anything that's colored in is proposed as new. Those are being built anyways.
Then what you're saying is regardless of changing the driveway, that yellow's being built anyway?
That's, that's being built anyways.
Yeah, okay, understood.
It's just coming out here.
It's just coming out here, this building.
This equestrian center was put in that location. I mean, it was an equestrian center in, in the subdivision. Is it still in agricultural use as an equestrian center?
To answer your question, Andrea, there's a letter on file from the building inspector that it is absolutely in agricultural use.
So, so it's, it's a driveway, it's a gravel drive, he could put it, he could put it in a lot of, he could put it anywhere he wants on this property. The question he's asking us is, should I enter it, should I, should I put a little bit of a spur off a Hemingway? Or should I have, or should I run, you know, right where my utilities are and have a longer, if, if, just a longer spur, if not, if not put it where my utilities are? I, I think, you know, all due respect, I think this is a question of where the driveway cut is into the road. I think the commercial, I think the commercial equestrian center is, if you had a meeting on it, would you be, would you be entertaining questions about the equestrian center or would you consider that off-topic?
Well, if this was a public hearing, I would venture to say it would come up.
I know it would come up, I'm asking if it'd be off-topic.
I don't, I personally don't think so. Why would it be?
Because it's, because it's in agricultural use, it's allowed to be there.
Yes, but we had a public hearing here, decisions were made, that now we're being asked to potentially, you know, change those decisions, which may work adversely.
I, I understand.
In the opinion, the eyes of some of the abutters that are not present, we are happy.
Yeah, no, I understand the whole, I understand it's totally subjective. If it's totally subjective, as to whether, as to whether a project's scope fits a minor mod or doesn't fit a minor mod. If that's an objective question, then, then it can be answered. If it's a subjective question, I understand that there's a lot of interest here. I only see the project as a drive cut. That's all I see it as, because the road inside his agricultural use is allowed. All this is allowed.
So Andrea, it certainly matters where the vehicles exit the roadway.
Yeah.
Okay, the approved roadway. If they're heading to the barn.
Right, right.
Okay, so to the extent that those vehicles are traveling a longer distance, to the, to the extent that those vehicles, it could be trucks or what have you in terms of noise, I don't know the implications of all that. And outside of a public hearing process, I don't want to guess.
Well, that's, that's the question, is what's, what's, what's the scope of the request? And is the scope of the request within what can be addressed as a minor mod or isn't it?
I think there's another question here. I think, is it, is it actually a modification to the plan too? So you have a first question of, is this a modification to the plan? Jeff's, I'm just using Jeff as an example, is of the opinion that, yes, it is, and it would require a public hearing. But you're, you're the, you're the other question, so you got to ask that first question. Is it actually a modification to the plan? Then if it is a modification, is it a minor or is it a major modification to the plan? And, and I'm not sure everybody's at that same place. That's the only reason I'm bringing that up.
There was foot, was there the sidewalk or the footpath that was going to go along this road for the access to the trails?
That's the, what's in orange here.
And that was still going to happen, right?
Yeah, there's actually a plan under...
Is there a plan?
Yes.
There's a plan there in front of Jeff.
You have a plan in front of you.
Yeah, just go ahead.
That, that was previously, Houston and I went out there, we went over the whole thing. It was previously voted, supposed to have been endorsed. We endorsed the deed, gave a deed, they got lost. Nobody knows where they are. Somewhere in this building is a Mylar, plans that were previously signed by the board. Be given to town council, town council doesn't know anything about it. So we've come here for two things, which we're going to go out, to re-endorse that plan. Town already has a new deed from us, they would like it to be delivered to the conservation office. And somebody, other, well, they may ask us to record it because other people haven't been able to. Conservation restriction that we spent years on was hand-delivered to Pulte. Pulte couldn't find it for two years. Finally, I don't know if that recorded, they were supposed to record it. Yesterday was my last understanding, get it in the conservation's hands. I don't know if that happened or not, hasn't. So we're assuming that we're probably going to have to re-execute, re-sign a conservation restriction. So along with all of this, we went to the trouble, had the engineers remake Mylars, remake the plans, do all this stuff, re-execute deeds. That's before, it was something that we wanted to get accomplished tonight, because conservation would like to see that, that stuff get recorded also.
So that's one order of business, and then the second order of business is requesting this modification. And your intention would be, as you mentioned, bringing utilities here, but not building the driveway or the curb cut or any of that, is that correct?
What you've, what you're presently constructing, these, this internal road here, are used by people and horses?
They're used for a couple of things, and it's quite simply what they're used for is, there are turnouts off of those, that horses get turned out to. And so the gates to be close to those particular roads, and particularly in the winter when we plow, we're able to plow, get close to the gates, so they can still put the horses in, take them in and out, feed them, give them water and so forth. So that's what those roads are being built for, for access around the property. And you'll see they lead to two different points in the barn. They go out one side, go out another side. And they will be used for people to ride on the property or walk.
And so you're prepared to have vehicles and horses on the road at the same time?
Yes.
Do you have any idea if there was a traffic study done that partly placed this here for any particular reason or anything? No?
Didn't we do it because we were going to, we thought that it was going to be the same drive that was going out into the town property?
To kind of mimic this?
At one point, yes, I think so.
To mimic the walk, the...
I think it was intended to...
Have a multiple purpose.
Serve as access to the public open space. And then as that issue came to the fore, we discovered that, that, you know, Mr. Bailey wanted to use it for access to the barns, and then he was kind enough to convey this other easement to take its place. Well, I think there was a little confusion in the thought process there, but, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's a driveway to a moderate-scale agricultural use, I guess.
And how are you getting in now?
I would love all of you to go down here and see how we're getting in.
I've been down there, I just, if you could, just refresh us, please.
Right now, we go over that lot that is proposed to be built. So we're going, right now, we're going here and then swinging around and then coming down. We were coming down here before. And again, it serves no purpose, but our driveway access right now is deplorable. And that's what's got me thinking about this. They still have construction here, they have construction here, they don't have a lot of construction here. We've lost people that said, we can't deal with it anymore. And I'm not exaggerating, when we've had people thrown from horses because there was no warning of a blast. So it's...
The four houses, four house lots here on Hemingway, right there, one, two, are those constructed yet?
No. This topography, you can look at the plans.
Yeah.
This is all elevated, probably.
Yeah, I can see that.
Quite a bit. And then it falls off down this way. There's a depression, some grading that it falls off here. So it works out that it's pretty close to the middle of this span, and it's a natural grading.
Tom, from an engineering perspective, any pros and cons to the two different locations we're considering?
I don't think so. This is graded to overcome the topography, so this is a, although it slopes downward, it's a somewhat reasonable slope from the road onto the original proposed driveway. The grading isn't really indicated here, but I think you could grade up to that roadway and make, make a safe driveway there. So, you know, I don't think that the volume of traffic that this facility generates, you know, that it's critical that folks go in this way. I think either one probably works from a traffic point of view.
Michelle, I did speak with Cole. Fortunately, he came in today, just happened to come in. So I showed him the plan and asked him what, if he had any public safety concerns about using an access there, one over the other. And he said, you know, no, if either one's open, he can get to it, it's just one's going to take him a bit longer. The, the yellow one would take him a bit longer to get to. And, you know, he, he doesn't know what that timeframe would do, but, you know, it's just a longer ride to get there. But it's the, it's the owner that's proposing this, it's not that the town's proposing a longer ride, so.
I mean, I guess my opinion, sort of back to our earlier conversation, is making a decision on, you know, the greater good. I'd hate to make a decision to change the location because there's a lot of construction here right now and it's causing some frustrating, yet temporary, conditions. And this hasn't even happened yet, and you may have some frustrating, yet temporary conditions here. You know, I guess I'd really, you know, want to understand all the compelling reasons and make sure everything's on the table for understanding why it's, it's being moved. You know, if it was really compelling from an engineering standpoint to do one over the other, I mean, you have utilities coming down here anyway, so... I do see it as a change, because this has been approved and because this has gone through such a lengthy process, I see it as a change, because it's changing what was approved to something different. Do I see it as minor? I guess in my opinion right now I do, but I'm not hearing really, like, hugely compelling arguments one way or the other. I guess it's sort of, so it's a little bit difficult for me to grasp all the real reasons for doing it.
I don't have the history of this, you folks do, because this occurred before I came on the board. So I, I don't have all that background and, but to me, I, as I sit here looking at it, I consider it a minor mod and I would, I would approve it. The only tweak I would make is I'd ask the gentleman to move it a few feet so it straddles those two lots across the street to minimize the chances of headlights going into either house. But that's only about 10 feet or something.
I think, yeah, I think it's pretty close to the lot line already.
Yeah, it is, but it could be moved a little. Anyway, that's my opinion, and we'll see what happens.
I just have an observation, and it's really just, if this was a town road, you know, if the road was actually owned by the town today and you wanted to move the driveway, there would be a process by which you would move the driveway and you would apply for a driveway permit or curb cut. Since it's not a town road, it seems to me it does fall under the purview of the planning board, and then it's up to the planning board to try to make a decision as to what does this rise to. That would be just my observation as to how I see it, is, does it rise to that minor or major change? Does it even rise to something that needs to be, be approved by the planning board? And I'm going to leave that in your hands, because you have much more experience with this than I do in Norfolk, and I just don't know which way to go with it.
So sense on minor, major modification from folks, just straw poll right now?
Major.
You said minor, Walter?
Yeah, but again, I don't have the background that would cause Jeff to say that's really major.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think it's minor, but I'm, you know, I'm not an elected member right now, so you don't have that...
Yeah, but you sat through all the original...
I did. I should, I should say, I should say for the record, for the record, that back six years ago, seven years ago, back when my daughter was around town, she rode at that barn. And her teacher was his, his tenant. Just want, just so that, just because there's, just so I want you to know that there is never any conflict there. Put that into the record. And you all know, she's been out of town for quite a few years. So this, I mean, I'm just stuck, I'm stuck on the fact that it's an agricultural road, and it's nice of them to ask us.
Well, I, I think Ray makes a great point, though. You know, it's not an accepted road. So it's up to us to really weigh in.
The road's going to be there anyways. That's the key.
That road, but we mean these roads. These roads are not approved by the town yet. Had this all been put in, there'd be a process if you needed to move this from here to here. A town process.
If, if it were something other than agricultural use, but I'm, I'm not...
This driveway cut would be a town process if you wanted to move it from here to here.
It would be. In most towns, that's how it goes. If you're moving a driveway, you have a process by which you move a driveway.
I actually don't think I've ever sat through that.
It's usually handled by Public Works, or that's, that's probably why you don't see it.
Yes, I, I, you know, it's, it is what it is. You're the last one.
I say minor. I, I don't have as much history either, Walter. I don't. I came in very towards the end of this, but I know enough about this particular corner and have been on-site with this whole group here, because this was a really, really sensitive corner. And it was quite prickly.
This one up here?
Yes.
Yes.
Quite prickly.
And there are some concerns, complaints presently regarding the activity taking place there in terms of what authority the town has. It's limited, you know, given that it is an agricultural use. But that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that you dismiss those complaints, those concerns that already exist with the property. And without opening up to a more public forum, you don't give those folks an opportunity to vet their concerns.
So that's my concern, and there may be something hidden that I'm not seeing here, but this actually seems like a better solution to me. Seems like it may be better, but there may be issues I'm just not, I'm just being naive about perhaps even, I don't know.
If vehicles start riding around in circles on that big loop, then...
But they can do that.
I understand.
That we can't stop them from.
But...
That we can't stop them.
Access influences...
So but given they're going to do that, given all of that...
Access influences that potentially.
I guess I'm not seeing that from this.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
What are the concerns that these people, or that you're hearing that we're not hearing, that we're not aware of?
The, the noise level for the, the horse shows evidently that are taking place.
Okay, so those are three times a year, and, and if we kept them down, they would, it would be okay with that? That's...
I mean, I can't, can't speak for them. And that's part of the problem without having the public process, that those folks don't know to come here.
Is that the only one that they have? Is that the only complaint that's been...
Oh, aside from the general issues that, you know, you yourself have with the fact that there's blasting and...
Oh, the blasting and, oh.
...having the equipment and, you know, I mean, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, so...
Okay, no, good to know.
You know, you say you receive complaints. What do you do with those complaints when you get them?
Well, I try to personally assess what's going on, ask questions of the person who's contacted. I mean, I'm in a, in a unique position on the board, because I'm actually serving in another capacity in the town. So at times I might get a phone call about something that other folks on the board may not get.
But if you got a complaint about somebody's establishment, don't you contact the establishment and say, I've received this complaint? And what's going on here, that we need to do something about it?
Well, they, they have made those complaints with the building inspector, basically enforcement officer, things of that nature. officer, things of that nature. I mean, there's a protocol, and Board of Health can have some influence over certain things in terms of nuisance.
But then wouldn't the building inspector contact us?
I don't know that they haven't. I mean, I don't, I mean.
Okay, so, so does somebody have the name of who made the complaint?
It's public information, yeah.
Okay, so it's on file someplace in this town?
Yeah, yeah, but a provider.
That voter slot, or?
Well, it probably would be with the zoning enforcement people, because generally they get involved in terms of whether it's an approved use and authorized, in terms of the hours of operation, things of that nature. That's typically the protocol that's followed, that the town follows.
Because that's, this is the first that we've heard of it, and we certainly would want to know these things, because we have people that manage that property, do that property, and if we've got a complaint, we certainly need to know about it, and need to do something about it.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that. And once again, to my point, you know, by having a public process, now that you want to make a change, I think having a public process gives those folks an opportunity to come and talk, talk to you, and determine whether or not this is truly an improvement, or potentially makes a situation worse, which we certainly don't want to be doing that.
Well, following up that lead, what do you propose?
If it's a major modification, then it's a public hearing.
And they get to come in and voice their opinion about this change of the driveway. So.
Question. When do you propose to install the new driveway, or to develop this driveway?
The driveways from the barn going out are going to be built, possibly as soon as in two weeks.
Okay.
And they're going to be built anyways.
Understood.
The access point that we have on the plans right now could be built at the same time.
Right.
But once we build that, the other roads are being built anyway, so we're talking about the elimination of probably 190 feet of driveway and adding 30. Oh, net gain, no matter what, it's going to, if we know what we're proposing, it's going to be, lose 160 feet of driveway.
Okay.
So is the action in front of us tonight to vote on major or minor? I need some help.
Well, that's step one. Well, I guess, decision one is whether or not it comprises a modification of the subdivision. Question two, if it does comprise a modification of the subdivision, the board should vote as to whether it's a major modification or a minor modification. And then if you decide it's minor, you can take a vote tonight. If you decide it's major, then it has to be publicly advertised, so. Question one, is it a modification of the subdivision? Question two, if it is, is it major or minor? Question three, if it is minor, and you want to vote tonight, if you don't need additional information, then you just take a vote.
When you say, question one, is, is it a modification to a subdivision, how is this a subdivision? This is a piece of private property, to begin with. How is it a subdivision?
But that road over there that is yet to be constructed, the orange road.
That's a pass.
The dashed, that road was approved as part of our subdivision review.
Well, not only that, even to a greater, I mean, this is all part of a subdivision.
Right. So, Hemingway.
So it's part of, you know, this is part of subdivision review.
Farrington, this, this, this whole thing was approved as part of what we signed off on, on the site plan decision. Am I correct on that?
It was shown on the plan.
Yeah, it was shown on the plan, yeah.
For this subdivision, not for this piece of property.
The division's all around it.
There had to be some access to the, this structure.
So, I guess it's, it is a question of interpreting the planning board's intent. Was it merely expedient to show the driveway because, as you said, there's a structure there, and somebody, the engineer drawing the plan figured out you had to get there, so they showed it? Or was it the intent of the board in approving this? This is an open space subdivision, a special permit, so the board's authority is broadly based over a whole bunch of things. Was this part of the board's decision process with respect to the open space subdivision? This is an open space, but was it considered, you know, an integral component of that? Is this a feature?
Could we?
Is the stable a feature of the open space?
So this was definitely significant, the footpath part of it. That was hugely significant. But could we, as a, try to put it in context? Could we say, for instance, comparing it to this lot? If they mirrored this, and this driveway came from here, it's a driveway to a private property. Could we use that as a similar reference point for the condition that we're talking about here, a driveway to a private property?
That's question one. Is it that? Is it a driveway to a private property, or was this roadway and the access to an agricultural use an inherent part of the board's decision-making process for an open space subdivision? Or is it just a driveway?
I think, I think this was.
Tom, isn't it highly unusual for a board of this nature to declare something, a minor modification to a subdivision, where you don't even have the party to the subdivision present and participating in the process?
Well, there's a point.
I mean, what am I missing?
Yeah, I suppose that is a point.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering why we even taken a vote, because nobody's come to us and asked for any modification. For us to even vote on.
It's interesting, because Mr. Bailey is the, is the owner of the tract of land within which the, most of the modification is going to occur, even though the developer of the subdivision is not here and is not requesting a modification.
All of the modification is going to occur, isn't it?
I, I think at the end of the day, in my opinion, we need to ensure that whatever changes are made are to the satisfaction of Pulte on one side, and if there's other abutters, interested parties, that, you know, we're listening to those folks. Because, I mean, anything we do here could perhaps have an effect on the evaluations, what have you, of properties in proximity to these other driveway, proposed driveway acts. I don't know that they do or don't. I'm just saying, without a Pulte representative participating in the process, you know, we're really denying them the opportunity to make that assessment, and I am not comfortable doing.
I'm not sure, given that this is private property, if he has the right, if it's just a driveway.
If it wasn't a special use, my thought would be, no, they don't have, if, if this homeowner buys the lot, let's say they buy it in fee simple from Pulte, and Pulte's not building the house, they can put the driveway, this house is, you know, they can put the driveway wherever they want it. It's not a modification of the subdivision, Pulte doesn't have to assent to it, et cetera. The difference here is kind of the unique status of this property, and what, what role does it play in the subdivision approval, even though it's a private lot?
And what is that? What does it play? What role does it play?
Well, I guess you have to look back and understand the intent of the planning board when they approve, when they approve the open space subdivision.
Well, it is an open space parcel, and we did know that there was a, we did know that there was going to be an active use on it, an agricultural use.
But it's not open space.
It's not part of the, it's not part of the calculation of open space?
What it is, the entire perimeter of this property was utilized to produce a yield plan, which indicated the amount of lots that could be built on this entire parcel in its entirety. And with the conservation restriction, this is a single private agricultural use lot with a conservation restriction on it. To meet all the requirements of the planning board's regulations to achieve this end outcome that we have here. It is a private lot. This particular lot is not even subject to the covenant. It was done that way on purpose, because it's an ongoing agricultural use, that if it was subject to the covenant, then Pulte could control what happened there. And that was purposely excluded from that. So, you're right in asking these questions, but Pulte has no say in this one particular lot. They did un, we own a couple other parcels still on this property, and we had to get permission from Pulte on that site, which wasn't an easy thing. So I'm glad that we excluded this particular parcel.
But it's their subdivision.
You want to say what?
It's their subdivision.
Right, but it's still his land.
We have a fee in the roads. They didn't, they don't own the.
But subdivision review includes design and details.
All they own is the roads, and we have a right to use the roads. So we have a right to access those roads.
When they're public roads, there's a different procedure to subdivision review, which, as Ray pointed out correctly, are under the auspices of the planning board.
Yeah, but this isn't part of the subdivision.
The road is.
Yes, the road is.
How do we access this property?
It's, you have an approved plan already.
How do we physically drive onto this property and get to our property?
There's already a plan in place.
We drive over the roads. Now, Pulte is responsible for constructing under the rules and regulations of Town and Norfolk. Every homeowner in there, it's Pulte's subdivision. You think if they want to do something, they have to get their permission?
So your access that's been approved is from Farrington Avenue.
Any of those roads?
But what's been approved as part of a subdivision is access from Farrington Avenue.
So I don't agree.
That's part of a public hearing process, where abutters, Pulte, what have you, participate in terms of decisions that the board makes. They're not here.
And the public hearing may close?
They're not, long time ago.
Okay, so, there's no more public hearing?
So what I'm saying is, that's the difference between a minor and major modification. A major modification requires that a public hearing take place, so that people are notified, and that they come before this board, and they express concerns and opinions. And I personally am saying that that's what I believe the board should do. We don't always agree on these things, but I have, you know, four years or so with the board where I recall, you know, vividly some of the disagreements and some of the issues that have come up. And I personally don't want to reopen some of these things unless folks have an opportunity to participate. That's just me personally.
Okay, well, I'll take it one step further. We even went the public hearing process, okay? From our boundaries, apparently, right now, we have two of us, Town and Norfolk and Pulte. You don't have any other folks. Even under your 300-foot guideline.
I understand. You know that there's some other folks that are sensitive to what's taking place here in terms of activity level and such. It's come up. I don't think it's a surprise to you.
But I, I'm following your point, and I think, I'm wondering if that might be a nice middle ground. I'm still not convinced that we have to get Pulte's opinion on this or input, but just given the length and history of all the issues here, I wonder if it's worthwhile just getting Pulte's opinion and input. It still might not change anybody's decision in the end. I think that's sort of the one piece for me, and I'm not saying it necessarily has to even be a public hearing, I'm not even sure that I'm there, but I would be interested in hearing his opinion on this, I think. I still am not sure whether I even think anything more than it's a driveway, you can put the driveway wherever you want. I haven't come to a conclusion on it yet, but I would still be interested to just hear, is there something I'm missing here? Is there something that he might see as detrimental that I'm just missing? That just sort of has escaped me?
Again, I, I don't have an issue with that. I think if I was Pulte, and I look at that, I think I, first thing I'd point out to you, that particular house that they're going to build is, is going to have those lights all the time. I mean, I wouldn't buy that lot, knowing that. So I would think that, number one, they should be thrilled that we're willing to move the driveway. The other roads that are going to go behind the second house that we pointed out, they're going to be built anyways. And we're going to drive all our trucks and everything else around in circles out there.
So, so if, if we did decide that it was a major modification, required a public hearing, and we invited Pulte, or Representative Pulte, to the table, and Pulte said, gee, I don't like that, because X. What do we do with that? Because this, this gentleman has the right to put the driveway wherever the hell he wants to put it, I think.
Well, until it's an accepted public road, there's different ground rules for how things get done, Walter. It's just the way it works.
And those ground rules are what?
Well, the planning board, while these roads, they're not even built yet, but ultimately, I mean, during, so during this period of time, the planning board is responsible for planning. It all falls under planning.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Until the roads are built, and then it becomes something which is more of a DPW-type activity.
Which is what Ray suggested, yeah.
Which we're not, we're not there yet.
Okay, fair enough. So, following your logic, we have a public hearing, we invite Pulte's representative, and Pulte says, hey, I like that, or I don't like it. It's information. What are we going to do with that?
Well, it depends what it is, Walter. I don't want to make a deal with semantics.
Well, I think we should start with question number one. Question number one was whether or not we think it's a modification of the site plan or not, major or minor. Whether or not changing this driveway location is a change to a site plan decision. Do we feel ready to vote on that?
It's an open space subdivision decision.
I think it's a decision.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I think it's a, I think it's a modification.
You do?
Yeah. I think it's minor, but I think it's a modification.
Not sure I, I'm not sure I agree. I'm not sure that just the driveway location put in the context that I agree. So I would say I don't think it is.
Okay.
I think you know how I feel about it.
Well, based on everything that has been said, including the information that Jeff provided, I think it is a modification to a site plan. You could, you could argue that it is. It was defined on the drawings that were used to approve the site plan for the development.
Okay. So there we have a vote that it's, it is a modification. So our next question, is it going to be minor, or is it going to be major, or modification?
And I agree with you, if public participation can be secured, I don't know whether there is an alternative to a full-fledged, you know, public hearing, but we definitely, in my opinion, need to have that public input. So if that's what's necessary to declare it a major modification in order to ensure that we get it, then I would feel that it's a major modification.
If the board determines it to be a major modification, you would be legally enjoined from acting on it without public care. So you can't say it's major, but we're not able to.
That's, I think that's what I said, yes.
So, and my opinion is, I believe it's minor, but I'm not prepared to go to question, to step three with making a decision, because I would still like the opportunity to talk to just Pulte. So I don't want to be bound to the. So I don't want to be bound to the major implications, but I would still, I would call it minor, but not be ready to vote on it yet. That's my opinion on that.
That seems like a middle ground.
Yeah, that's really splitting it right down the middle.
So I'm voting minor. I guess minor is my vote.
But fair enough, following that logic, is your proposal then to pick up the phone and call Representative Pulte and say, here's what's going on, what do you think? How would you get that input from Pulte?
Sure, absolutely.
That would get what you do?
Absolutely. We'd ask, you know, Ray to give him a call and-
Would that satisfy you?
Yeah, I think what we would do is provide some other persons who would, I think, be interested in comment, residents of the board.
I'm sorry, if I couldn't hear you.
I think there's other folks who would be interested in participating. It may not just be Pulte in terms of who would be interested in participating.
So in that case, you would recommend the full public hearing route because that's the way to get everybody-
Well, not necessarily.
He'd go back to the public, he'd go back to the-
Major.
No, he'd go back to the hearings we had on this and the attendees and call them interested parties.
Yeah, we have a pretty good idea of-
Aye, 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 aye.
No kidding.
You can do anything you want voluntarily, formal or informal, in terms of putting people in, so.
All right, we have two votes on the table. We need to hear from our other two folks. Major or minor is the question at hand.
You voted-
He's major, right?
You already heard from me.
Yes, major, minor. Two votes on the table.
I don't have the history. I don't have, I didn't attend all those tough hearings. I don't know who the interested parties are other than Pulte. I don't know. I can't see that this is a major. I just can't see it. And it's only because I'm ignorant of what the background issues are, but I just think this is a minor modification.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate your comments, Walter. I mean, I know it's more difficult when you don't have all the history. I understand. I understand. And you still expect it to render an opinion. I respect that.
So my opinion is that it is a modification to the site plan, but it's a minor modification to the site plan. However, I would support the chair's effort to contact Pulte and anyone else who you think might offer an opinion on this before we vote.
Oh, I can't walk into this one.
You're abstaining?
It's real, I totally understand the value of public comment, but the reason I asked at the beginning, I can't, no, I can't, I always have an opinion on everything. I can't help myself.
And we value opinion, so please.
So the concern that I would have is that by giving people the expectation that we're listening and that the reason, the reason we opened it up for public comment is because we want, is because it'll, it could, there could be information that would change the decision, might, in my view, be a false one because it's an agricultural use and he can put the road every way he wants inside his property. It's just a matter of where it comes out on the street. It's, I don't think it's that, I don't think where it comes out on the street is going to generate public comment. I think other things might generate public comment, but I don't think it's going to be where the drive comes out on the street. So I, I think it's nice, but I don't think it's going to, I don't, I think it puts, I wouldn't want to be in that position of welcoming the opinion and then not having it affect the outcome.
You're abstaining from a vote, though?
I mean, I think it's a minor decision. So it's a minor decision. If it's a minor decision, then the public's input is, wouldn't, wouldn't affect where the board comes out on it. It's, or, or, it's, or it could really make a difference to the whole subdivision. It's major. I mean, those words have meaning.
So then we're down to our third vote, which is, are we ready to render a decision tonight? Which I'm going to guess that we pretty much are not ready to do that, but anybody that wants to jump in and disagree?
Unless it's a major mod and then we can make a decision tonight.
Exactly.
At least we have consensus on that one, right? So we're probably going to take a little bit of opinion out there and we'll be ready to hopefully close this at our next meeting.
You know, I don't understand procedure totally, but if I understand what just took place, I mean, I think there was three out of four that said they believe it's a minor modification.
That's right.
And I believe that was a vote in the public forum.
That's a vote. Yes, it is.
So minor modification, then it's over.
No, now we, now that the third part would be actually deciding that where you have changed the driveway to that we agree on. So we first have to just decide whether we think it's minor or major. Then we actually take another vote on the actual change proposed, and that's what we're saying we're not ready to do tonight.
That's the process, yeah.
Did I get that right?
Yeah.
You can vote the change up or down, having decided that you can take the change.
So we're not ready to vote on the final change, but we're at least ready to say it doesn't need to go any further than just this board for that decision, we're just not ready tonight to render the decision?
If I ask that question, and if I understand it right, which I totally agree with, the suggestion is that you get somebody from Pulte to say, you know, we think this makes sense or we think it doesn't. And if they don't like it, then what?
Well, it just, it's interesting to hear what they have to say. There may be something that we're, like I say, there might be something I'm completely naive to that I'm missing that might help inform us in our decision. I'm hoping not, but-
So if you want, I mean, I know the last way to contact them, but I can certainly, if you can contact them, they need a plan. So I believe that we're offering that we'll contact somebody from there in the morning, make a plan available to them, and then they can call Ray off.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
With that said, I appreciate your time, but the other issue that we hope the, our problem is that endorsement of that plan that was once previously endorsed and-
That's right.
-that can move forward and-
And the conservation restriction.
Let me make one comment, which is responding to Jeff's concern. An applicant isn't here. A planning board has authority to modify a subdivision, whether or not an applicant wants that done. So in this case, it's the planning board is both the applicant, in a sense, and is making the decision. Because right now, I assume there's no formal documentation before the board. There's not a subdivision modification request with paperwork and all that type of thing filed. So it's the board making the decision to modify a subdivision which you previously approved, which you have authority to.
And then modify it to record this? Because haven't we already signed off on this? We didn't sign off on it? And it's lost or something?
Well, that's another issue. Somebody lost the drawing or something.
Without the trail access plan? That's one that I don't even want to see again.
Do we know what happened in terms of losing the documentation?
As far as I know, it was signed by the Board of Selectment and the Conservation, and you gave it to Pulte to file at the registry? No, the trail access deed?
There was two documents. And I know Betsy, you keep asking the same question. There's a conservation restriction-
Yep.
-that is signed by Planning Board, Selectment, Conservation Commission, and then that is recorded. That was hand-delivered to Pulte.
Pulte has that.
Pulte says they have it. We know it was delivered to them.
They did send Maria a copy, but it had never been recorded at the registry.
Correct. Okay. The other document is, at the request of the town, they wanted to have better access to the open space. Tom and myself went out there, looked at trail access in a couple of spots, plus this access point. We then prepared a plan-
Prepared a deed?
And prepared a deed.
So I have the draft deed?
Correct. And that was reviewed by town council. That's where we think that document got lost.
Okay.
But somewhere in this office, there is a Mylar that's already been signed by this board.
Of this?
Of the same, it's the exact same plan that I duplicated.
I think I remember endorsing it.
Yeah, me too. Me too. I think that was early on when I came on the board.
There's a date on that plan that tells you-
Was it October 2013?
It was, that was the date the plan was made.
This is October 16th, 2013.
2013.
That's pretty good, Betsy.
Yeah, what are you, something's going?
Yeah.
You have that, but that same plan.
It's incredible.
That same plan.
Not really. I just remember seeing the draft deed, so.
Yeah, the draft deed went to town council.
And there-
And we endorsed it, and it got-
Well, we want this endorsed. We want this back.
Yeah.
But it might be in, it might be in town hall.
But you're endorsing the same thing, so someday you find it.
It should be just a extra copy.
So if we endorse the Mylar, you guys never picked it up?
No, it wasn't our responsibility to pick it up because we deeded it and gave it to you.
So we'll-
We offered to, this time-
Would we have recorded it?
Take, no, it's on the registry.
Oh.
No, this time we have offered to record it, once it's endorsed and signed by everybody. So it doesn't go either the one side or the other side.
Yeah, it was endorsed.
Oh, she had her computer on.
On October 24th.
But then it went missing. But then it went missing, right?
The board endorsed it.
So should we just, can we just send another copy? We don't have to vote on it, we've already voted on it.
Are these Mylars or are they on my-
No, these are papers.
I have the Mylar, but I gave it to Ray.
We lost it again.
Yeah, I can get them, we can sign them tonight.
Oh, I'll get it, I'll get it. Some Sharpies. Yep, definitely endorsed. Oh, I'll get some Sharpies.
Okay. Should we get something else done while we're waiting?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Request to release Nynshire Drive Observation Account. Project withdrawn.
Who gets the other signatures?
I don't know what that means.
She was going to go to the next one.
Okay.
Is that, is that the-
That's the park-and-go thing.
Yeah, the auto storage-
Is it?
Which fellow withdrew?
Yeah, actually I'll have Ray.
It's not doing it?
That's what I heard last night.
Really?
Yeah, didn't I hear that last night?
Chip, chip storage is not going forward?
Yeah, that's, let's check over there.
You had everything complete? Fully approved?
Who said that?
She's still writing?
Chris.
My daughter's still writing. With her own money this time.
Chris saying that?
Now it's her money that she's spending, so I can't say a thing.
Ray said that the fellow-
He spent a lot on all the engineering.
There was a better opportunity to do something else with his money, so he wanted to do that. He knew he was going to do this, but he's not going to do it here, he's going to do it somewhere else later. That's where we're going. So that's a shame because that was a nice project.
So we're holding some funds for his observation or something?
We'll have them sign that.
Yeah, he has to put the funds in the observation account at the time of endorsement.
So do we just need to vote to release those funds for Nynshire?
We're withdrawing the project after all that.
Too bad.
That's the auto storage facility, right?
After all that, yeah.
Such a shame.
It is a shame.
All right, so motion to withdraw the observation account.
Second.
Or release it, I guess.
Yeah, that's $2,000 we had collected for their observation, in their observation account, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly.
All right, Mill River Heights, we have to sign Form G2, request to release lots one through seven.
Wow. Mill River. Mill River. The turtles.
Yeah, seven lots off of Myrtle Street.
All of them? Is that all the lots they have, or do they have nine in there?
No, it was seven subdivision lots and then two A&R lots-
At the end.
-on Myrtle Street, so.
It says everything else.
Yep. So he's actually, you guys had voted a bond amount of $244 a couple months ago, so he's finally got his surety. So I have the Form G4, and then he's requesting the release of lots one through seven.
Do we have anything on record that we were holding before we, besides the bond?
No, this is the original bond that we're establishing for the subdivision roadway work.
So no other conditions that we wanted met before we were going to release the lots?
No, I have the cost, I have the cost to complete here that the DPW had done.
We reviewed that.
Yeah, well, it's actually now I'm looking at it, it's back in February.
Yeah, I remember there was the question about that with the whole granite curbs, monolithic, because there was a-
We went back and forth a couple meetings.
I don't think we ever got an answer on that.
No, we never really got an answer, oh.
Because it was, had the monolithic or the Cape Cod or something instead of the-
Yeah, yeah.
Granite.
Wow. Just because it was, it was approved with granite and it came in with bituminous?
Yeah.
Wow.
So it affected the bond estimate?
That's right. That's where we picked it up, isn't that bond amount?
And then Bob's original bond amount, he only applied a 15% contingency instead of 25, so we adjusted his, we adjusted the total to $242.4.
Guess the question is, does the cost to complete still reflect monolithic or Cape Cod rather than granite?
I'm not sure.
It would appear to be bituminous because the total granite curbing here is 170 linear feet, so it must be just the roundings.
Yeah, oh yeah, we're supposed to talk to, that was one of the things we're supposed to talk to.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I'm confused. There's also an item here for sloped granite curbing, which is consistent with the board's requirement, 1,800 feet, so that's fine. But I don't know as why you'd go to, I don't know what's this 170 feet of vertical granite is.
Maybe at the entrance?
Yeah, probably. It must transition to something. So it does reflect sloped granite edging, which is the board's standard, so it's fine. Contingency is increased to 25%. And we have streetlights.
Oh my God, how many?
Three.
Three.
So the bond is just a signature, but the lot releases a vote, is that right?
Mm-hmm. You can vote on both. You want-
What is the form of the surety that's being offered?
It's an, I think it's an insurance bond.
These days, when I'm soon as I'm tired, I go right to sleep, just in case. I must be working every day, but I've been working for-
So the documents that you have, as far as surety, they're, they'll be duly signed once we sign?
Yep, you guys will sign them. I'll notarize the signatures, they'll go off to the surety company.
Who've already signed?
They'll, they will sign after you guys.
So do we normally wait until the documents are duly signed before releasing lots?
You can.
It's been a while.
Is it the town's- Is it the town's policy? Do we check the creditworthiness of the firm that's offering the bond? Does anybody, does this go to like the town treasurer or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not a bad suggestion, however.
I mean, a lot of towns do that. I don't know if they practice it. I think a lot of times we've had more cash bonds, things like that. So if this is an insurance company bond, certainly would not hazard a guess as to the creditworthiness of insurance companies.
Check their rating type of thing?
Yeah.
Standard, or Moody's, whatever the case might be. Yeah, so maybe we, I mean, do you see, Betsy, any issue if we waited to release the lots until this is, we can--
How do you check the creditworthiness?
I'm sure Julie can finance, she could--
Whoever the, I don't know, the finance staff here.
It's a good point, because bond companies have gone under in the last few years. They must check vendors and stuff all the time.
We can do that.
In other towns, the planning board always gets the statement from the treasurer saying the creditworthiness is fine, but I have no idea how the treasurer determines that. You know, Moody's or Standard and Poor's rating, I don't know.
You could just call them up, and if they answer the phone, then they're good.
That might be a step. A lot of companies don't do that, so.
Okay, there's somebody there.
Yeah, so if you at least want to sign the form and then--
But we can vote on a contingent upon checking on this--
You can do that, sure, yeah.
--on the rating, the way it's sort of taken care of.
But that's a much more complicated motion, so we're gonna have to make it.
It's late, right? All right, you wrote down the value. All right, I'll make a motion to sign the G2 Performance Bond in the amount of $242,400.
Yep.
Contingent upon confirmation that the insurance company is in good financial status to be confirmed by our town financial staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'm going to move that we release lots one through seven of Mill River Heights.
Contingent upon getting the--
Yes.
--credit rating checked, right?
So amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Just, it's a question, I'm looking for reference to the lots. Normally it would have lots on here, yes or no, as an amendment?
I think it does, lots one through seven.
Like I said, I'm very tired, so I may be missing--
I know. But maybe--
It says, okay, it just says, "In showing seven proposed lots," so--
Yeah, and then the lot release form actually lists the lot numbers.
Okay, you have it there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure. Right? We're good on that?
So I hold the favor along with the rest of my colleagues here.
It's kind of scary, because he actually was reading it and hesitated.
So you can have a chance to choose. Sure, I'll let you choose. How many signatures on the-- Hey, Bets, how many signatures on the release of lots?
Three is okay.
Okay. Do you want to delete signatures since you're--
Who can be against uniform street number system?
Now, we started talking about that last time. Ray, did you have more for us this time on the uniform numbering system?
You know, I have to apologize. I didn't do a darn thing since the last meeting, and I was supposed to.
We were like, what were we supposed to ask the fire chief?
Actually, I asked her, what was I supposed to do? I don't remember.
I came up with one thing, but I did forget that.
I had walked out.
Possibly be in opposition to a uniform street number system.
It's not that they could be in opposition, it's just that maybe I missed something, or maybe there's a really, you know, good point that could be added to it. So why not do it now? Rather than put it in place and then they say, oh, you should change this.
How do I do numbers? He does it.
I need Walter and Jeff to sign this.
Here, it's between the tax assessor and the planning office. They work together.
Betsy will tell you the first time she did it.
But they don't talk to the partner.
First time you did numbering.
You said I didn't have to sign.
They said just one signature, right?
No, I need three.
Something like another one.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, if I said one, I was mistaken.
But that's just street names in terms of distinguishing them for pronunciation for instance.
Yep, okay.
Have the fire department respond to the random street or something, but I don't know.
So do we have anything else pressing for tonight?
Just wanted to ask Ray about that street numbering. I actually, I walked out of that meeting early, thinking I'd go home and get some sleep, and I ended up reading it.
I'm sorry. Did it help you sleep or not?
It did. It was wonderful. Just what I needed.
Good planning documents always do that.
But the thing that, the thing that has been sitting in my head ever since then was that it's up to the planning board, to, the way I read it when I was tired, was it's up to the planning board to establish the street numbers. And then there's this discretionary clause that if there's a question as to what numbers to use, it goes to the Board of Selectment.
I can remove that, and that's why I want people to review it.
That was weird. It's either, it's either here or it's there.
I stole it from another town, I have to admit.
Okay.
And so that was just a process that they were using, so they sent it to the Board of Selectment, but--
Jesus, that's a lot.
I mean, there's a lot of discretion when it comes to numbering.
I'm sure.
So it seemed odd to go to another board when the whole thing is discretionary.
I'll look in that, look at that and see.
CPC is missing a representative--
From the planning board?
From the planning board. Because I wasn't, because I have to get reappointed every year.
Oh, because we appointed you and it was only for like a month, and then it expired? Is that what happened?
Exactly. Exactly.
Do you want to still do it?
I mean, it's up to the board. If anybody wants to do it, that's fine. I can do it in my sleep.
What do y'all feel?
Uncomfortable with that.
I'd love you two if you're willing to.
I'm sorry, what was the question? I was signing my voices.
For Andrea to serve, continue serving as our representative to the CPC from the planning board.
Well, if she's willing to do it, let's do it, because other than that, we're gonna have to go out in the streets with a net to find somebody.
Wow, there's an endorsement. She didn't--
You don't need to sign a lawsuit.
Yeah, that's, but they are missing, they are missing a voting member.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Andrea as our planning board CPC representative.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You can vote for yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to do it.
Oh, Betsy, they're having a meeting in, on the 12th.
CPC, that's today.
It was today, the 12th?
Today.
Then it's the 19th.
What day is that?
A week from today.
I'm gone until Tuesday.
Okay. So I just have to let Earl Green know.
So you'll be back then, because it's on Tuesday.
Who does the appointment form? I do. Do you want to see me after the meeting and I'll print it up and you can bring it to Carol?
Yeah, some of these you can start on if you want.
Do you mind?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, or if you want to start on--
They actually worry about quarantine in August, can you imagine? So we're gonna come up with three vacancies for economic development. Walter?
Good question. Can I net?
We need people.
I saw, I saw Greg on the train the other day, this morning.
Oh, he's back?
He's gonna, he's back, he's gonna be starting with the masters.
Who's that?
Greg Merlos is--
Oh, okay, sure.
Oh, really?
I spoke with Greg, and he's concerned in terms of his time.
Because he's gonna work and get his masters at the same time?
Yeah.
He's an MBA. I think he only has bachelor's in engineering.
Excuse me, only a bachelor's in engineering?
She thought he had a masters. No, no, she thought he had a masters.
So Bets, you don't want us to sign this one, right?
Hold off on that one.
I totally agree, by the way.
We've gone over the $2,000 observation fee, so I'm gonna have to collect money.
Yeah, okay. This one, I'm scratching right here. This is you guys, right?
For chemical engineering?
You guys spent 32 hours, 33 hours out there walking around and--
Oh, it's like--
You have fun with that, buddy. I'm gonna go for it.
Two submissions submitted by Deplacia, naturally, the open space.
The one that has the well--
Yeah.